Manchester by the sea. Select Board to order.
John.
I'm here.
Anne is here, Kathy.
I'm here too.
Brian.
I'm here.
Jeff, hey, I got all the names right. Okay. Yeah, it helps.
There'll be more opportunities.
Um, the first item on our agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any in the room? Is there any online?
Not seeing any.
Okay. Um, the next is the chairman's report. Um, and I would like to report briefly that one of our goals from several years ago was to improve communications and get the select board out into the community. And I will commend everyone here except me for doing that. In various venues, places where we answer questions, places where we just show up. Um, this board has done more to get out into the community than um any that I have been on before, and I salute you for it. The next on the agenda is the action items. Um, and are there any there's one action item that is on here that's not on our agenda, which is the Ocean Street Review.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that one. We know we got the news that the grant was not we were not selected for the grant, but we need to develop next steps. So.
Let's move back to next.
Can we discuss that at the next meeting?
Yeah, we were, we've asked for some feedback from the agency that we applied for funding. You should have that prior to your next meeting.
Okay.
Because in lieu of getting another grant, though, we gotta do something and figure.
Yeah.
And I would, um, last, last month, we had an update on KADA, and I'll probably put that back on for sometime in January.
Okay.
Or second sometime in January.
Are there any other items that should or should not be on the, I'm sure there thinks it shouldn't be, but any suggestions for the action items? Okay. Um, then we will go directly to the fire department for pinning Sarah Lawrence.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for having us in. Today, we have the opportunity to do a badge pinning for a call firefighter, as well as a promotional badge pinning for one of our officers. Uh, so first, I'd like to introduce Joe Sanfilippo. Joe was a call firefighter with us previously. Uh, he came back on board. Uh, he's already a certified firefighter, one and two, uh, and has already been active with the department since he's, uh, his return. Uh, so welcome him back. We have his wife Julie here, who will be doing, uh, his badge pinning. And, um, Joe lives in Gloucester, and, um, he's able to help us out on the tough times, the overnight times and the wee early in the morning time. So, uh, we want to thank Joe for his dedication and willingness to come back, uh, and serve the community. So no further ado. You guys practice this?
No. We've got Andy's here, so don't worry about it. I can't see him.
That looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Congratulations. Thanks.
Uh, next I'd like to, uh, bring up, uh, now, uh, being pinned as captain, uh, Bob Cavender. Bob has been, uh, with the department for many years, um, promoted to lieutenant a few years ago, went through an assessment center, as well as a written examination. Um, a little bit about Bob, one of the things with the department is leading by example. Uh, he's leads by example every day. Uh, one of the things is you can train, uh, to do something right. He trains till his crew doesn't get it wrong. And that's the type of thing and the dedication that, um, I expect, and he does a wonderful job. Uh, Katie's joining, as well as his son Owen and Sawyer.
Oh, no, he's just gonna bounce out.
Bear with me.
Oh, you're doing great.
Hey.
Finally.
Thanks, Brian. This is fun.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, the, um, next item on the agenda is the harbor management plan task force update, which is in your packets, and I is, is Sarah going to be here?
No. Yeah, she told me late she had a meeting.
Do you have Brian online?
Okay.
Any questions, please?
I'm not on duty. I'm home.
Um, I assume everyone has read. Jeff, do you have questions or comments?
I had a question about interest in implementing recreational shell fishing.
Yeah, actually, Jeff, that is part of, um, the, one of the things that's been discussed, and the shellfish warden, Jim Elder, is on this committee. So it is, uh, important and definitely part of this process. I'm surprised it's not listed here.
Okay. Is that something that they're gonna move forward with, or is this just?
So, yeah, so it's, it's in the documentation for the, for the management plan. The process actually started a number of years ago. It takes years, years to get marine fisheries to open up closed shellfish beds, uh, which has everything to do with the outfall in Salem and our own. They were closed because they weren't, well, they weren't as good as they are today. So that process will keep moving forward. It's in this plan just because, uh, it's important that, uh, we keep that, uh, in front of everybody with, with the harbor as, as we're moving forward. So definitely, yes, we are working towards reopening shellfish beds.
That's, I mean, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so in terms of the, um, the topic areas, I thought it was very comprehensive, and covered a lot of ground. What I'd be looking for in the next draft, and I didn't really see it mentioned, is prioritization. You know, whenever I see a list of more than five things, that usually screams that, uh, you know, you need some prioritization, because all of these topic areas are not of equal importance. So is the, um, committee looking towards that, um, survey to help with that prioritization, or um, is there some other means that they expect to use to, to prioritize these areas?
Right, so the survey and then the, um, public session that was held last winter, uh, will be used to, uh, identify the things that are most important to the residents here in town. Uh, the priority will come from, from this feedback, yes.
So will it be, can we expect to see that in the next draft, I guess?
So the, uh, draft plan will be shared with the task force in early to mid-January, and for review, and then, uh, the public draft will come out in likely in April. And there'll be, uh, public feedback again. We'll probably have another breakout session, and, um, folks will get to weigh in, and I'm sure some things will move up and down as far as priority goes at that point, but it, it will be driven by the public in their feedback.
Go ahead.
No, at this point, it brings, uh, what we wanted to touch on, and now we'll just wait for the, the next, uh, draft. That'll define it.
Yeah, just, uh, one observation or, or question by on, uh, is probably covered in these bullets one way or another, but I'd, I'd like to have some specific comment with regard to the Reed Masconomo Harbor expansion. Because that's been an area that folks had probably, I've, I've heard some, some talk about that, and I'm sure it will get addressed somewhere here, but I think it warrants a separate bullet.
Yep, absolutely. Let me make a note to bring that up.
And I know that's a moving target, where it stands now versus spring, but task force will do the best it can.
Yes, it will.
Yep.
Thank you for that. I've got that noted.
What, um, I'm, I'm curious about potential sites for a second program.
So that will be dropping off the list. We had a discussion with, um, Christine Player, our engineer of record for just about all the good things that have happened. And she came out and looked at the site, uh, met with members of the yacht club, MSA, harbor department, and the site that was identified, uh, potentially as, uh, the place for this is not suitable. So it's, uh, back to the drawing board.
Curiosity, what, what, what was it?
Over, if you were to go over to the chowder house, to the left of the chowder house, down over the bank there where folks go with their dogs and throw sticks in the water. The bank's pretty badly degraded right there. Uh, and that was identified as a, a site that could be converted to a ramp, do some mitigation of the, uh, waterfront around it, but it's just too steep.
Thank you. Is the current ramp, um, over, overused?
No, this, this, this one was targeted more towards, uh, sailing dinghies, smaller sailing vessels, uh, that could potentially be, uh, part of the yacht club or community sailing program to, uh, promote and expand sailing and competition uh, in Manchester, which unfortunately, we don't, we don't have enough of. This would have accommodated hand dollyed, uh, sailboats, or, you know, maybe even something with a golf cart type of launching, not accommodating the type of vessels that are launched behind Town Hall.
Um, I was surprised to see a community voting program. Because I thought we had one.
Well, there's some discussion about, uh, MSA, uh, doing more. This really, this is in here just to try to promote it. What we have isn't really a community sailing program. It is a sailing school, and I, I think it's moving towards a community sailing program.
They do it all. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, that's I, I think we have what we were looking for. Um, I would be interested in seeing the draft before, um, we come up with a a final form, but that's just because I'm nosy.
Oh, no, yeah.
Several of us are. I, I'm just a nosey, so.
No, absolutely. So the, the committee will get the draft in, uh, right after the first of the year, and then, try to clean it up a little bit, and then provide the draft again in April. If you wanted to see it before the public, I, I strongly suspect it can be accommodated.
All of these are public documents, I believe, so.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
There's, there's no point in, okay, fine. So we will add that to our actions for February something. Okay, our next, um, item is the, um, boat launch update. And I've got detailed, um, information, and Greg sent out an overview which suggested that it made a profit by $5,000.
Yes.
Yeah. Does anyone?
Answer your questions, or should I give a, a summary of the season?
Okay, what if you, you give a summary of the season?
Fine, go ahead.
Sure, okay. Uh, and I actually updated it a little bit today. Uh, the numbers are a little bit different, what you have in front of you. We, we did manage to generate some revenue this weekend with the, uh, carnival in town. Uh, nothing Friday or Saturday, but we did bring in $349 on Sunday. Approximately, what's 80, uh, signed up for the full-time service, which was great. Uh, we brought in 800 and, uh, as of yesterday, $850 in the per ride. The $10 per person each way, and the harbor tours is right around $4,600 so far. Remember that, uh, we're fiscal. Our, our year won't end until June 30th, so I wouldn't be surprised to see the numbers go up for the fiscal year. Unless we want to run this calendar, whatever, whatever your pleasure.
I shouldn't ask so quickly, but I think having something that's financial and on our financial calendar is going to get to be a mess.
Yeah, yeah, fiscal year is good.
So, uh, one of the things on here, I'm sure you noticed, uh, our $18 an hour rate is competitive with Gloucester only. Everyone else around is paying 25. I'm gonna recommend an increase to 23 for next year, and I did put a breakout of staff cost projections by hours, uh, per month for you at the $23 an hour. Right now, uh, as of right now, we spent, uh, $12,270, uh, to staff the launch, and we have a balance of just under $18,500. I, I suspect you also saw that we did have a, uh, mechanical on the small launch with a brand-new transmission, two-year-old transmission. Uh, so we did have to have, uh, that replaced this year.
John, do you have any?
Yeah, I ju, I, I just had a question when I was looking at, uh, so this year it's around 5,000. I'm not quite figuring out how the math works here. I think I'd appreciate it if you could kind of put the numbers together, budget versus actual on some lines, because, uh, to try and figure out where you are, we kind of had to move around this sheet. The numbers are all there, but they're not lined up, and it's a little bit of a challenge, but, um, hopefully in the future, you can put it together more, more along the lines of regular financials. A question on your, your 26 staff cost projections, which are significantly higher, and significantly higher than the 25% or so increase that in, in, in your assumption in going from 18 to 23. Is there a reason behind that increase? Was the staffing this year insufficient, and it should have been higher, or what's the thinking behind that?
Well, if, if you, uh, go back into the document, I, I do talk about the challenges with the staffing this year. We got an extremely late start. I couldn't, advertise for staffing. Uh, I will say that the majority of the people that I was interested in, uh, got jobs at yacht clubs and, uh, here and Beverly and in Marblehead, and then our $18 an hour rate, I did lose somebody partway through the season to more money, so. And we did, uh, not have uh, launch drivers for every shift all summer long, but as, as I said back when we were talking about bringing this on board, uh, the slow days, I was able to fill in with harbor masters who are already on duty, so. The launch was staffed every shift, but we, we certainly didn't have enough just launch drivers.
It sounds like you didn't have a lot of non-launch drivers. I, I mean, the, the projections are double what they were, and I understand that the increase of 30% or whatever is part of that, but the other 70%, you're saying that was covered by you or somebody else because you didn't have people?
So I had $30,000 for staffing for this year out of the 41. That's approximately what I estimated I needed. Uh, I'm projecting for next year, uh, right around 50.
Okay, I think.
I'm sorry, 39. I apologize. Staff costs 40, so 40,000. 40,000, so that's a $10,000 increase over this year. Uh, made up of the $5 per hour difference that I'm recommending that we're going to have to go to in order to staff the launch.
So you had a budget of 30,000 this year, and you came in at 12?
Well, 12 so far.
Well, okay, 12 so far, but.
He's got May, June, and July, or May, May and June.
Right, we've got two more months to go here.
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct. You have, you have more to go.
And I'll be able to advertise and hire people uh, at the appropriate time this coming year, so I expect to have a broader pool of candidates.
Well, that number's very conservative. May and June, May's, you know, a little slow. June, I mean, certainly together, they're certainly equal to a summer month, and maybe a little bit more, but, um, being conservative, I understand.
Just.
Okay.
My question is, the budget won't be, uh, established until after town meeting, which is mid-April. Is that time enough to hire?
It is. Um, we, we couldn't even secure the money and, uh, for, I, I had the 40,000. I'm, I'm going to go with the assumption that the launch will operate again this coming year, so I'll hire. I'm, I'm going to tell everyone the rate this past season was $18 an hour. I'm hoping that we go to 23. That's the expectation. And, uh, if people want to take that chance, which I suspect many of them will, we'll, we'll have people who, as of July 1st, will go from the 18 to the increase, whatever it is. Be a, a little bit of a flyer on their part, but.
Any other questions on this?
So I, I agree with John. I think it would be helpful to go back to the original financial chart we used with FinCon, right? Marry these numbers with that. Explain what's in a fiscal year versus a calendar, you know, what's in season, just because it's hard to make some sense out of it, but, um, I just want to make sure that whatever we do for next season, we're consistent with the commitment we made to the town, which is, there's got to be so many people who sign up for the service or it doesn't run, right? So if we're talking about increasing some of the costs, we've got to figure out what is that minimum number of customers that we need, and do you need to adjust the price so that you can, you can do that? Because it seems like we came dangerously close to, um, barely covering the costs without the harbor tours. The harbor tours were like 3,000, whatever, and probably made a profit of 5,000. Okay, so is the harbor tours 3,000 of that? Because that, that means we, we just got to be real careful with setting the price for next year, making sure we have the right number of uh, minimum signups so that we're covering the cost with the stable dollars, and whatever we get for harbor tours is gravy.
So the budget you gave me for this year was 41,000. Uh, show that, uh, we brought in 46,000 approximately in our prepaid customers, so $5,000.
The 46 was from just the prepaid.
Correct.
Got it.
And then another nearly 5,000 in harbor tours, so that's 10,000 over the budget that I was given for this year, and, and so far, we still have, uh, $18,000 in payroll unspent, so.
Got it.
Um, that, the 30,000 that was, um, allocated for salaries doesn't include the $10,000 for insurance.
Right, the insurance. I'm including the insurance in my thought process, so.
All right, yep. So that leaves us 20,000 to the good.
Um, is there, is there anything we can do to help you prepare, um, to put your case in front of the FinCon?
No, I, I'm, I feel, uh, comfortable with this guidance tonight, that, uh, I'll have all the numbers put together in a, an acceptable manner, and uh, certainly if I am uncomfortable or feel like I'm, I'm not there, I, I won't be shy about reaching out.
Anything else on, on the launch? Um, I think we're looking for promotion funds.
I moved at the select board grant approval for the boat launch service to be included in the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Okay.
Yes.
Jeff says yes. Ryan.
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Anne says yes.
John, yeah.
Elle says yes. Okay, thank you very much, Brian, for both of your.
Thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a speedy rest of your evening.
We've only got 73 pages left to go.
Good luck.
Okay, the next item.
These guys can fly through there. Why couldn't yours stop when we have it?
Yes. Okay. Um, very nice, very complete presentation. No, I don't want it to be, very nice presentation. Um, do you want to give us a short summary of what you think the high points are?
Uh, yeah, sure. So, uh, obviously, here, here we are again in the next, the, the quarter passed. It seems like it was yesterday. It was definitely. Um, accreditation was the highlight of the, uh, of the last three months. We managed to basically, uh, finalize all our files, finalize all our policies, did all the updates, changed over to the new sixth edition standards, and as you can see, we were, uh, compliant with 273 out of 274 standards. I mean, one of the things that, uh, that we got held up on was, uh, our training for our parking enforcement people for, uh, our training for our parking enforcement people for fire space policing and emotionally disturbed, dealing with emotionally disturbed people. Something we should have been doing all along. I don't know how it got through the last reaccreditation, but we've made a significant change there. We've already done the training with the three people that we've had onboard this year. So that was one thing. As you can see, community policing was a huge thing. We've, we've, we've done a lot of outreach, working with Jake in the fire department in regards to after school, after school slush event. One of the highlights was a Manchester Essex Police and Fire softball game against the Essex Police and Fire softball game. And we're happy to report that we candidly beat them. I won't, I, I won't release the score, but we, but, but we did, but the great team building emphasis. And we're looking forward to doing it again next year. I, I, I was approached by the Manchester Essex Little League at the Carnival. They want to help us promote it next year, maybe to raise some money for our scholarships and seaside fighting.
And only one injury, is that what you call it?
We had one injury. One of our retirees broke his arm, but, but he made it. But he's, he's doing fine. And emergency management was the, one of the things that I've worked on quite a bit in the last three months. I participated with Tom Green in an, in emergency preparedness event over at Legion and an online Zoom meeting that Greg was on, on, on with. Just basically teaching people how to prepare their homes and, and have their effects ready in the case of a major hurricane. One of the things that we, meaning we had to cancel because I was a little bit under the weather. We're going to do a debris management plan, working with Chuck and Mima. Because in the, in the event, we have that major hurricane, all that stuff that would wash in. If, you know, from the harbor, it's all in the house, it's way something we'd have to have a plan on how to deal. So those are the, basically the three things that we, I've been working on the last three months.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, no, I, I, I read your report and I commend you on all of the community policing initiatives. Also the accreditation and those two topics were the, were the major ones. But the community police, uh, policing efforts, just one paragraph after another, you're really reaching out so that, so that your, your police force really be, they, they become familiar faces with as many folks in town as possible. And I commend you for all of those efforts. You reviewed the high points, but that's because there weren't any low points. I thought it was good. I did have a question on the parking enforcement grid. Those numbers are a little confusing.
Yeah, I, I didn't get the, the whole numbers for Beach Street, but those are numbers, those are the, so 23 through, 2018 through 2023 are the total numbers for Beach Street? Like all of Beach Street?
Just, just carving out, just where the, where the, where the, where the posts are or all of Beach Street?
All of Beach Street. So 2024 is where the posts were. So from, from the tracks to Tappan. And I noticed a typo up top. It's, it was 215 violations, but I put 210 in the narrative.
Oh, okay. So that's to date?
That was to the date of this October 1st.
And counting?
And, yeah, so we will probably have more because we ran it through October 15th or whatever.
So it's, it's ended now or you're not sending them out? Maybe it's still measuring or whatever.
No, but I have met with the parking solutions people. And we have the cement pads put in in the other areas, like we talked about in front of the post office, in front of the note, the, uh, fire hydrants out, out here and, and on Beach Street. And they're looking to expand maybe next season because they thought it went very well.
I was going to ask, yeah.
So I have a meeting coming up with them in the next couple of weeks. So there'll, there'll be more to follow on that. I'll probably be back in front of you to tell you where, 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 where we, where we would like to expand. It's definitely the areas that we already have the cement pads possibly put in. But then an area of Summer Street going up Electric Light Hill past the National Grid building is another possible spot that we will put the sticks in.
What, what is the seasonal period of enforcement for those?
So we usually run May 15th through, we, well, in the past, when we had the staff, we run May 15th through, go through Columbus.
Okay. And that, so that would be more or less what would be expected? Okay. Good.
I have a question. This is for both Chuck and you. Who do those things in the winter? It's kind of really, as far as plowing the sidewalks. We're looking at, we're going to remain and then replace them when they get knocked over.
I asked them, I asked them that question and they're going to leave them for now. And if it turns into an issue, then they'll, they'll come out and remove. And put them back in the screen.
While we're on that subject, same, similar question. When John asked about the timing, the signs that we have around parking enforcement gives one the impression we're enforcing the parking 365 days a year and we're really not. So I just wanted to throw it out there. In Rockport, if you go to downtown Rockport, the signs actually say the months when the parking is enforced. And people have to use the, they have a kiosk, so you have to use kiosks. But it, it's clear when parking is being enforced and not. So just.
I think that would have to be changed to the bylaw by the board.
Well, I'm, I'm asking, you know, we, so now that, when you introduce technology, right? Sometimes the processes or procedures have to change. So the sticks are going to be out there. Are they going to continue to, and are we going to continue to use them? If not, then we might want to let people know, you know, might want to have the sign reflect reality. So I just, I'm not promoting one way or another. You enforce it 365 or you tell people you're not enforcing it 365, one way or another.
I, I think we've got parking, one, a list of things to talk about sometime.
Yeah.
Yeah. This gets a little tricky because if we say we're not enforcing it, are people going to just park there?
Well, that's it. But, but if you have the sticks there, then you have to enforce it. And if there's one person parking for longer than two hours and all of the spaces are empty, now it's getting enforced. And then you might hear other types of complaints. So I, I just, when you introduce technology, it's, it's not the same as doing it manually as.
So I did ask John Johnson to change the signs, the, that now it says electronically being.
I saw that. That was great.
Yeah, so I did ask him now to change the sign back to the original eight to six.
Okay, okay. There you go. Um, regarding, sorry, John, are you done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much done, but that's, that's a fair point. I needed a, it's, that did me personally.
On what I wanted to.
Yes. In a fairly short period of time.
So, so they're working?
I just look in the mailbox on a weekly basis.
Question, couple of questions for you. Again, great report. You mentioned the Chiefs of Police Conference. I noticed them in the Seaport District when I was driving through there last week. Were you ready to attend that?
I attended Saturday night.
Anything, any takeaways that you care to share?
No, so one take, one thing that we were looking at is, so IMC that we went to with Regional Dispatches potentially going away. So one of the things that Chris Ryan from Regional asked if we looked around to, with, with the police side of things, looked around and see what other records management systems that we could potentially use eventually. That's what, only the real thing that I was focused on, on, on that. Uh, next year it's in, I think it's in Boulder, Colorado. So I'll probably tend the entire conference then. But it's, uh, it's difficult to manage being home when it's right down the street. So I didn't attend it regularly like I did last year, just that one day.
Um, and just one other question. I'm glad Daisy was a big hit this year.
Yeah, she was.
Just out of curiosity, because we've had some great fundraisers here in Manchester. She does service Essex schoolchildren as well. Do they ever have a fundraiser to help with her care?
Hmm, they haven't as of yet, yeah, so.
Maybe put a mention in there that they can help.
We had a fundraiser here at the, at the beach.
I saw that, yeah, that's great.
I think if we had better weather, we would have done a lot better. A, a lot better. We made over like $500 for that, that Monday, so that was good. Still, still, it was a rainy, cold day. But I think Andrew is going to work with the two students that brought this forward and try something with them. And we also are working with Tiffany on a, on a business promotion where they can donate for a month. And then the dog will wield the, their business. So.
Big banner.
Yeah, so like a movie.
Jacket or something that's.
So that'll, that'll be rolling out very shortly.
How cute, okay.
Okay, I'm trying to think of our sign ordinance and how. How that applies.
Moving car. Yeah.
And should we travel and, so you have a school resource vehicle?
Yeah, we, so we did not trade in the, the vehicle that we were supposed to trade in this year because they were only going to give us $2,500. And then we got a discounted dog cage for it from another community. And we were able to, with the money allocated for the, the, the new car this year, we were able to cut some money out of the new car for upfitting and lights. And as you can see, it's black with the ghost lettering. So that saved us $1,000 there rather than have it black and white. So we were able to use that entire budgeted, or funds budgeted to outfit her car and we saved the other one.
And that's going to be, that's.
That's solely dedicated to the dog.
So, oh, the dog. Well, her.
Yeah, that's the dog.
I'm just thinking about selling advertising on that vehicle.
Oh my.
Oh, you see, I mean, I think that Gloucester's SRO's vehicle is all advertised up.
But that, that vehicle was donated too, so.
People in Manchester donated at this point. Just a.
Were there questions for the chief?
I just have a comment. It's a lot of good work here and thank you to you and your, everyone who put this together. It's great. I was, I was glad to see all the stuff at the school and the dog and working with the kids. And I think that's really important. So that's great.
Yep, and it's worked out really well.
Yeah.
A lot of positive feedback as I put in the memo from the middle school principal.
Yeah, that's great.
Was the dog tasting the pies as well?
She was there.
She tried to get on the table.
Any? Oh, no. Is there anyone online who goes, okay. Great.
Thanks, chief.
Good evening.
The party continues.
Yeah. Uh, so I apologize. I didn't send a report for the quarter, but with the monthly reports, I think we have a good overview. I hit on a few items. One is I can't thank God and staff, the softball tournament, just, that's just one part of the cohesion that's going on between, between police and fire, between training out in the street on calls. It's pretty impressive to see where we're at. Staffing updates, we have six qualified firefighters, so we're fully staffed on that end, fully staffed on the full-time end. And I think our overtime reflects that. We're right on budget and being fully staffed allows us to do that without any other huge spikes historically that we've seen. Vehicle wise, the new ladder truck is working out awesome. It's really exceeding our expectations. You might see the guys out in it all the time because they're out training and doing different things on a daily basis. Engine one is, currently has a coolant leak, so we're in the process. We've replaced some lines, but it's still leaking. They don't know where, so we're working on that. And then we're also still borrowing the Loomfield engine, which is working out great for us. They, their station won't be ready for another year or so, so we got another year, hopefully we can hold on to it. One of the things that I had mentioned, I had talked to Greg and I brought it up with the finance committee. We have been working, our dealer that we got the ladder truck through is also the same dealer that we ordered the ambulances through last year. So trying to think creatively, we have an engine that's due for engine one in FY '28. So looking at the pricing on the engines and kind of forecasting, they have a new environmental ruling on diesel engines. It's going to add another $100,000 to the cost of the motor, not just the truck. So working with the dealer, we've come up with an idea to spec a demo truck for us. They're going to buy it or spec it on, on their own. That would be available to us in FY '28 for current day money. So I'm working on trying to get some of their specifics on that, but it's a little creative way to try to.
Okay, so we get a two-year-old truck?
No, it'll be, it'll, it takes two and a half years to build. We just don't have to pay for it to actually get it there. Normally you have to pay for a truck for two years before you even get to see it. So it's just trying to play, you know, move the basket a little bit, if you will. Our software is working awesome. Like Todd had mentioned, the Regional Dispatch is looking at new software for the dispatch as well as the police. 90% of the fire departments are using something called First Do, not IMC. So they're going to try to get the regional to use that software. So they'll start absorbing those costs once they do, in the transition or switch over. So that's working out well. New website's up and running, operational. We've had some great feedback from residents. Our Community Connect where residents can log in and give us information skyrocketed with the amount of people that have logged into the website, clicked on that link and, and added some resources to it. One of the things I'll be putting forward to in the future is some rate increases on permits and fees. Just, we haven't really increased our permitting on the fire prevention side in a while. Some is handcuffed by Mass General Law, but there are some other areas that we can increase as well, as well as maybe potentially looking at burning permit charges, singing beach, bonfires, I should say, cooking fires. Yeah. Typically we were given out for free. I think that maybe we could get a few bucks for those. Essentially, training, all the members attended the manufacturer ladder truck training as well as rope rescue training last month. And then this month we'll be doing extrication training as well. Other than that, equipment, the grants have been going really well. Thanks to Chief Fitzgerald, we got an emergency management grant to outfit the UTV with lights and a radio. And then we're also looking at an equipment grant to put a little patient transport. It's called the SCID unit, goes in the back of it, so you can put a patient back there or a forest fire pump. The vehicle's been used four times as of last week. We had to take somebody else out of the woods, so that played a major role. Blasting is 90% done. So we have one more little area in the 128 belt, but they have to wait for the state DOT to approve that. And that's probably going to be in the January, February timeframe. I don't have a exact position or exact deadline for that one.
Do you know how many days of blasting this?
I believe they said about a week. Don't quote me on that because that's going to change. They're doing it based upon, once they start in that area, they'll have a better idea. They're just doing a face bundle. They've seen for rock so far and are forecasting it out towards what they expect to see in that little area, so.
So 128 will actually close?
They'll do a rolling block. So what they'll do is a state police officer will start slowing traffic at 1:33, right before they blast, and then they'll let them go. So it's not shut down.
Slow is a slow.
Yeah, gotcha. Yep. That's what it.
Does blasting to Brady hurt glass if you're going slower?
It's all the air on the side of the caution, so, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I did read your report, which was, was it two weeks ago or something? And I, and I looked at that. You know, just, just, just like the policing end of things, you guys are reaching out and have got a lot of things that are out in the public. It's community police, policing, I can't say community firefighting necessarily is the right term.
I mean, we've been doing.
But maybe there's something along those.
Yes, so we're doing, we'll be in the schools. We've talked to all the principals, we'll be in the schools a couple of times for each grade, kindergarten through third. And then we'll be the consultant agent, helping them with the Community Connect and doing some, we've seen an increase in cooking fires. So doing some cooking fire awareness maybe in the community centers in Newport Park and the place, so.
Outreach, John. It's the outreach.
All right, that's good, which is a broad term, but that, that fits.
The chili cookoff was a great success.
I didn't get the results on that.
A qualified firefighter won by a, just like we mentioned the softball score.
All right. Thank you for asking. So a, a question, I, I, in, in your first section here on, on your report, you look at it and say, I guess it's maybe coincidental. All the vehicles had problems.
Yep.
Now, is that a, is that symptomatic just because of age or something? I mean, I understand the latter, I had to go back to, you know, it was just new and a few things.
Yeah.
But the engine, which I know is old.
Yeah, that's 2011, I believe. So typically it should be frontlined, you should get about 20 years, 25 years out of an engine. It should be a primary response vehicle for the first 10 and then go to the backup. And then go to the backup. So it's, it was primary response vehicle for, since two thousand and eleven, since we got.
I mean, I didn't look at historical ones. Sometimes when I'm looking at this, the status report is just in terms of vehicles on order, there aren't any problems.
Yeah.
It's just.
These just started to.
September happened to be a tough month.
Exactly.
Okay.
Started creeping up.
Fine, when I just saw that, I, I had to ask the question because you're juggling a lot of vehicles here. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, um, again, thank you for the community outreach. Um, I like the, the postings on the website, you know, and, on the social media when you're just doing even the training or responding to an incident, it gives the residents an, an understanding of what you do every day. Because hopefully they don't have to call you to come to their house and meet you that way. So, um, I think that's all great. Um, I like the idea of trying to take a look at the, the revenue portion of your responsibilities. We probably haven't looked at that at all. Um, so that would be good. I had a question for you regarding, um, uh, multifamily housing. So, um, it just came up, discussion with my neighbors. We live in multifamily housing, but, you know, if we go forward with the three A zoning changes or whatever, and we start to see more multifamily housing, is there anything that we should be thinking? And you don't have to answer me right now, right? But is there anything we should be thinking about in terms of, you know, fire prevention or safety, um, tweaking our bylaws or anything? Just, I think it's good to look at that.
Yeah.
Um, if you haven't already, because we, you know, we haven't looked at a lot of things in a lot of years and you're, and you're chipping away at it, which is great. Um, that's just another thing, maybe.
Yeah, and I'll get back to you. I know a bunch of communities have looked at different, um, variations of residential sprinkler codes. Once you hit a certain amount of units, it automatically triggers by state law anyway.
How many units is that? No? Okay, get, get back.
Uh, so there's different, different communities have tackled that different ways. That would be one thing that we could look at depending on the density and things like.
Yeah, for like any new construction or, um, you know, I think that would be something we should at least think about.
Cool. I think that, uh, Chief Clary actually brought the, uh, couple of years.
He was talking about retrofitting what we have.
Versus.
Um, um, or at some point, but also for new construction and I'm just.
It was on the radar.
It was on the radar and I just, you know, if we do approve any zoning changes, we probably want to get in front of that. Thank you very much. And the chili was great. My daughter, my granddaughter, daughter and I, we, all three voted for different people. So we have different tastes in my family, but it was a great time.
Well, there was no cinnamon in it. Uh, no, this is not the same fight I'm in two years ago. Right, and, uh, I think that the people of Manchester want more, deserve more, and you're getting more. And that, to both chiefs, thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, I honestly, it's not me. The staff is the ones that, they're the boots on the ground and they, they're interacting with the public on a daily basis, so. My hat's off to them.
But, yeah, but. Lead by example.
Starts at the top.
I don't really have much to say. Just thank you and your department for all your hard work. Um, everything looks good. Actually, one thing I did have a question about under the work time scheduling.
Yeah.
Says acting out a grade, a hundred and five hours. That's people doing jobs above their.
Yeah, so let's say lieutenant is out on vacation, uh, they see the firefighter or an acting lieutenant will move up in their spot and they're compensated for those hours.
Those hours.
Yeah, but it's not overtime hours, it's.
Plus whatever that, whatever that grade.
Different.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Thank you for your monthly reports. They're very informative. Thank you for getting involved in softball and.
Well, I had the lead for the Woods breast, so.
Well, um, yeah, the, the, the whole. Can't see the whole atmosphere in town has been much, much improved, but certainly the relationship between our public safety.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's working by on and Todd and, uh, DPW. I think all the departments really, um, you know, foster one another and, um, it's, uh, pretty cool to see.
And, and there's lots of outreach to, to bring the public in, which is very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the charter house rental fee increase. Did everyone see the message from Jack Burke who thinks it should be much higher?
Oh, no, I didn't see that.
Oh.
Let's see that.
All right.
Okay, just to.
It may have been just to you and me, and I didn't. Anyway, um, Jack is from the community preservation committee point of view. He thinks that these, the community preservation committee is putting a lot of money into maintaining those facilities. And he thinks that we could increase, further increase, um, the rental fees. Um, I did check with the yacht club and the yacht club charges two hundred dollars an hour. Monday through Thursday.
An hour?
An hour. Um, with no time limit and three hundred dollars an hour with a minimum of five hour Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Right, well, I can't seem, I'm unable to figure out what, how that compares with, because I don't know how many hours each of the charter house thinks.
It's like four or five hours.
Yeah.
Morning, couple of evenings.
Yeah.
And four.
Yeah.
Three or four.
Yeah, so it would be fifteen hundred dollars from the yacht club for a Friday, five hour.
What are they providing? Anything?
Oh, they're probably providing, they're cer, almost cer, I, I don't, they can provide a bartender.
Additionally to that. In addition to that cost.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, they, they would certainly have somebody there from the staff to watch out for the tips questions.
Yeah. I mean, do they clean up and all that or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting that, 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 that we need to increase these rates further than Cheryl and Ashley, but I think in comparison with at least one local group.
I mean, it's a beautiful venue. Um, this is quite modest fee for. But it is, you know, it's out. Risk associated with that as well, so.
Go ahead.
One question or observation here. I, I get the impression that the weekends are all sold out.
Certainly during the summer months, yes.
Okay, and, and looking at this in the math, it seems like they're all sold out to residents. Because the difference between when we dropped on the, on the outside people, we dropped ten folks a couple of years ago. And the differential is four hundred dollars, which makes that four thousand bucks. And that's pretty close to what the difference was in the money drop. So I'm just wondering if that's because we give residents, what, like a one-week running start or something? I don't know.
They do.
Okay, all right. So they jump on all of it, and so the outside guys, they don't have a chance to spend more money because there's nothing to spend it on.
Certainly during the weekends, yes.
Yeah, yeah, during the weekends. And I, I, I think that's where the, so we've got, we've got this limited inventory. And it's a great marketing exercise to say, you know, it's the point of, uh, resistance here. But, uh, Cheryl, I think has assessed it correctly, and she says, no, we're not doing anything about the out of, out of town residents. We're just saying in town is going up.
I just want to make sure we're fair to the residents too, I mean.
Well, they have a first shot at it and they should.
Yeah.
And still a good deal in town.
That's the best deal.
But I, you know, I would ask Cheryl and say, do all of the residents get the Saturday, Sunday? In other words, by the time that week goes by, there's nothing left for out of town a line.
Well, there, there might be a handful. Cheryl's on the, on the line. She can.
Oh.
You wanted to try to, I don't know if you know that answer, Cheryl. No, you're muted.
Let's write this down. I will mute Cheryl.
Oh, is there really any more explanation that we need? Uh, I, I, I am with Jeff on this. This is, this town property, you know, lots of it comes out of the CPA, so which is funded by the town.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm not, you know, I don't want to give it away, but I think, you know, it's kind of a.
Don't, don't want to price it. It's only the top tier of Manchester.
Right, yeah, exactly.
No, I think this is, uh, for those who don't have membership to the yacht club.
Yeah.
Or access to the yacht club, who still want some of the same, uh,
amenities.
Amenities, you know, you're not going to go in a singing beach club, you're not going to, uh, B and T. This is, this is the common man's private club.
Yep.
And I think that we just gotta, and for that reason, I think we gotta keep, you know, keep it affordable.
I mean, my, as long as we're covering maybe a little bit different the cost and a little, I know, yeah.
Yeah, um, Cheryl's email here indicated it would, a modest increase would help cover costs. Are we covering our costs? I think that was my question the last.
We, we are.
We are, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds really awesome.
I think Cheryl's got her sound on.
All right, don't be blaming that on me. You guys had me muted. Um, so I think John's question was about, um, the early, uh, reservations done by uh, residents. So the residents start in October. They start actually this Thursday, and that usually does take care of a lot of the Saturdays, not so much the Sundays and a couple of Fridays. But, but, and then non-residents can start in January. So it kind of does cut down just by the schedule. It does cut down on a lot of the big weddings too. Um, but the big weddings are a lot of wear and tear too, so that's kind of why we end up with just a few of those a year, which is fine. Um, but I think it's always been kind of a, a balance is what we're looking for with the charter house. Um, I think like Brian said, the poor man's, uh, yacht club, which I appreciate. Um, so I do, you know, I, the way I've always understood it is that's kind of how we as a town want it to be, but, you know. Something changes, you let me know. I feel like a fifty-dollar increase for residents is modest and most people won't even notice. Um, but I think if we go up too much, we're just, you know, it's, it's just not a community building anymore. So it's just which, you know, which way do we want it to be?
Okay.
I was looking when my daughter got married. Uh, she's looking at, which one was on the twenties. We got a nice friend.
Mm-hmm.
And that, and so instead, let's save the money. It's on a nice venue. It's not going to cost us, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, right? And, uh, I'm a big fan of having a lot of success with weddings, but.
That is not part of the guarantee.
I've been to three weddings there and all three have ended in divorce.
You're not.
So don't invite me to any wedding.
Do I need to add another column to my spreadsheet? Successful weddings?
Those are extra.
I think Brian's gonna have a column of his own.
Okay, is there, um, any more discussion or should we get a motion?
I remember that the board approved the increase to the residential rates for renting when the charter house is recommended by the parks and recreation committee.
Second.
John.
Yes.
Anne says, yes, Kathy.
Yes.
Brian.
Yours.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Okay. The next, um, item on the agenda is, um, the special town meeting articles. And is, uh, Alan Wilson.
He is, he's, uh, he is with us.
I'm here.
Okay. Right, would you like to?
So we've had some discussions for the last couple of meetings about, uh, uh, articles besides the sort of main attraction, which is the three-day zoning. Um, so in addition to that, uh, we do have a vote from the community preservation committees seeking voter approval for the, uh, contribution towards the, uh, de, de normity property conservation effort, um, roughly three hundred and thirty acres in total. Part of that is in Manchester. Um, asking the town to approve two hundred and fifty thousand from CPC funds um, to go towards that effort. It's a three million dollar project. Uh, we'd be contributing two hundred and fifty thousand. So I think in the past you've indicated that you'd be willing to put that on, on the warrant. Uh, so that, that is one item. A, a second item, we've talked about the need for us to upgrade our stormwater management, uh, regulations, bylaw and regulations. Uh, this is through what's called the MS four program. Four S is there, but anyways, Chuck can probably tell who those four S is, I'm not remembering off the top of my head. Uh, but anyways, the, our current regulations, uh, they were modeled after the state DEP template. Um, EPA has, um, desires some upgrades to that and is seeking, uh, upgrades for the, you know, all communities to, for their stormwater management. Um, we've been working, uh, with town council on an alternative approach. So instead of, you know, doing a, you know, we've got twenty-seven pages of stormwater bylaw there now, um, and trying to revamp another, you know, twenty-three pages worth of bylaw. We're looking at having a much shorter and simpler bylaw that basically authorizes the DPW to promulgate of regulations that are in compliance with EPA standards and, and guidelines. Um, so that would be a much shorter bylaw, it's about three and a half pages, uh, that would, that would replace our existing bylaw. Uh, and I think makes for a simpler process and certainly makes it easier to update, uh, those regulations if and when new, uh, state and federal guidelines are, are, are developed. Um, so we're, uh, we received a, a bylaw language from town council today. Uh, Chuck was going to run that by, uh, folks at EPA to make sure they were comfortable with it. Um, I think we're optimistic that they will be. Um, and so I think this might be a good, a good way to proceed. And as I say, simplifies the process. Um, still, still accomplishes the same goal in terms of having, uh, those rules and regs in place, um, but makes it easier to, to modify as we go forward.
We had done it three years or two years ago when we updated the bylaw, then all we'd have to do is go to a select board meeting to update the rules and regulations.
Right.
Oh, we'd have to read the twenty-three pages.
Well, yeah, but we did that anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, 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 excuse me, Madam Chair, I, I made one suggestion to town council for an addition to that draft bylaw. I'll pass it on to Chuck. Um, if he's going to be the one to refer it to EPA, but basically my suggestion was we incorporate into the bylaw the December one, twenty twenty-four deadline that EPA has imposed on us. For promulgating regulations.
Let's, uh, let's a little explanation point on that, and I think we'll make EPA happy to see that deadline in there.
My first question is, are there any projects in town now or foreseen that would come under this stormwater between now and April?
Well, you know, had it been in place, you know, fire, like CST would have fallen under this. It wouldn't circumvent their need for a special permit or anything. But it would very, make it very clear that this was required because it's, the, the main catch is over an area, uh, acre of disturbed area.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that doesn't, that's not impossible, but, and then there's other guidelines within that, um, that would trigger the full, um, bylaw.
Okay. Right. I thought that. Uh, okay, so, so the special permit from the planning board for CST would have had to follow these full regulations, whereas at the moment it doesn't. Okay.
And there are certainly, you know, stormwater standards in the special permit and, you know, other places in the zoning, but this is, you know, in some weird event where it doesn't trigger, you know, some sort of COCOM review or some sort of planning board review. We have to have this on the books.
Mm-hmm.
It's. It's municipal's sanitary sewer, separate sanitary sewer, is the MS four.
So.
Basically.
Sanitary or stormwater?
It's, they, the MS four acronym is sanitary, uh, or s- storm sewer, so it's.
Okay. It's different from a sanitary sewer.
Correct.
Okay. Got it.
So they grandfathered under our current guidelines.
Grandfathered.
And when these, these, in other words, that, that they're meeting our current guidelines, which will change based upon this thing, but they, they don't necessarily, because they started before that. Fine.
Yeah, we're not, we're not retroactively adding.
Yes, that's what I.
Okay. Is do we know of any other projects coming up that would? Yeah, but SLV is not.
But it's, but I, I mean, if it's.
What I'm trying to find out is why we absolutely positively have to bring this up at this town ready.
Why now?
Because of the.
EPA deadline that they've imposed. That's, that's a short answer.
I'm not sure that, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to read into the mentality of the town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we, we had the option again at spring town meeting, but we weren't, you know, certainly not ready at that point, so we put it off.
Do you think this is going to be convivial to you?
I think there may be people at the town meeting who are unhappy that the state is forcing things on us that we don't want. And they may not be happy that the EPA is forcing things on us that we don't want.
And they may not have heard of this at all, and they're totally surprised, and that will make them unhappy as well.
Yes.
You're gonna admit it that way.
It's a, it's a trifecta of unhappiness.
If you want to look at our EPA permit from the, NFT's permit for the wastewater, it's even more ridiculous, but. You want that top authority.
In terms of, um, impacts, I think people would be very comfortable with what this is propagating, what it's trying to accomplish.
If they understood it.
Understood, I think they, they've approved an existing stormwater bylaw that is is pretty close to what is being asked for in terms of, um, refinements. So I, I think it can be sold as, as a, as a, as an upgrade.
Yeah, just presented as an updated.
Final, but to meet the deadline.
An amendment to what we currently have.
It's not.
But what we are actually, I think, suggesting is that the town meeting lose control over this. That it, that, that, that the regulations be promulgated by the DPW and approved by the select board rather than presented to town meeting.
What can we do with that?
Well, so this goes back to the discussion about when I wanted to present a twenty-three page document to the, to the voters at town meeting versus a three-page document. That's, and, and some thinking that a three-pager would, would be easier to digest. Having said that, what I just said still holds that even though it's a new set of twenty-three pages, it's not a, a sea change in terms of what's being, uh, proposed in terms of regulation. It's complying with, with what EPA is asking us to do, but it's, what they're asking us to do is close to what we have today.
So it's not, so it's not all new, it's just some of it's.
Correct.
Just polishing and
question? Sure.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Certainly.
Thank you, um. I, I obviously would defer to the select board on this issue, but my own impression is that town meeting would be, particularly for this town meeting, when we're going to confront MBTA zoning, would be happy to pass this off th- this EPA requirement off to the select board and the DPW to decide. I, I think they'll be happy not to have to wrestle with twenty-two, twenty-five pages of detailed regulations.
Question?
John.
For Chuck. Chuck, uh, so you've gone through the regulations and you're prepared to chat about them for a couple of minutes, people? Because I think the town, they will look to you, and I think they would, they, they would really seriously consider what your, your comments are in that regard. The one question I have here is, frankly, we're sitting here, this is the first time we've seen this, I think. When did, when did this come out from, um?
So, yeah, you haven't seen the final version?
No, but this topic, this stormwater thing.
So it did come out last, last, the winter.
Yeah, I'm not sure when the exact email was that we got from the, basically it was from EPA's council. Telling that, you know, they were basically going through all of Massachusetts, looking for the people that adopted DEP, nasty EP's guidelines and and Leonard saying, no, these are the real guidelines. So that was last fall or winter at some point. We could have had a draft ready for town meeting, but it would have been a heavy lift, um, to, you know, make it understandable, just kind of like it is now. So we punted it from then to now. I, we did have a draft, I, you know, was able to send it to Anne as Greg and I and Mark Resnick were passing it around our desks. I would say it's, it is tough because there's a lot of definition, you know, so there, if you're looking at it as a red line, there are a lot of definitions that we tried to capture back in. But those are kind of good housekeeping, not the content-driven changes. The content-driven changes are very light, but as Greg said, it's, you know, they are changes, they are coming from above, not from our, you know, existing, you know.
The town's requirements.
Yep. Um, that being said, I mean, they're not anything, you know, extravagant in terms of, you know, putting a lot of process, if anything, I would say they're, you know, they're more regulating of stormwater, which goes kind of in with taming development and curbing unruly development with respect to the environment. Um, so they are along those lines, but they are coming from a non-townet.
Okay. Well, I, I, if, if I may, I mean, I, I kind of agree with Alan's comment that in light of the MBTA thing, if you provide testimony and your thoughts, I think a lot of people would say, fine, and I think there are people that say, oh, this strengthens things, that's good. Which is what this does. And there's nothing active right now that I think you would have to address the CST and put that in context, but other than that.
They're going beyond those, the guidelines.
I understand.
Just wanted to be careful that we're not approving, we're not asking the town meeting to approve the regulations. We're asking the town meeting, I think, to lose, give up control over these regulations to the DPW and the select board. So I think that's a good idea, because I don't think that there's anybody, that there are probably five people in town who would care enough to read all of these, understand them, and ask reasonable questions. Um.
And you were one of them.
This, this. Sorry? This is, this is stuff that's very technical for, um, a, a, an open town meeting to take on. So I, I think, in fact, that, that changing uh, the, the, the change that made it something that the DPW would produce and the select board would bless, will make the town run better. I just hope the town meeting can be brought to understand that that's what we're asking for. Uh, we shouldn't be getting into the question of, of whether the project is a concom directed permit or, or um, planning board directed project and where the DPW comes in and how it gets approved by the DPW. We should just, just in my opinion, we're better off just saying this is some, this is something that requires technical expertise, and we have the technical expertise in it.
So what is the warrant actually going to say?
Well, the warrant would have the proposed three-pager that, that basically says we're, uh, moving forward with EPA compliant stormwater regs and that the DPW will proponentate those regulations, um, after review and approval by the select.
That would be for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, look at that. You saved yourself a half an hour.
Oh, easy.
I think more than that, yeah.
At least half an hour. I, I've Ma- Madam Chair, if I could, I, I, my professional career was an environment, as an environmental lawyer. And I read the proposed draft regulations that Chuck has drafted, and without doing a ton of research, I didn't understand them.
Good job, Chuck.
Yeah, I didn't write them either, but.
Hey. Okay.
Okay, um, so three A we've got, that's okay. CPC, I think we're okay with stormwater. Sounds as if we've got the solution that the select board can stand behind.
So the other, the other one was the responsibility of amending, basically expanding a short-term rental bylaw. I mean, anticipation of the new state law that takes effect in February regarding, uh, ADUs being by right use in single-family home districts, uh, as long as they're, I think it's nine hundred square feet maximum. So there's concern that with that new state law effect, uh, that'll open up possibility of, of, of new ADUs. And given our pretty lax, um, unless, not very rigorous definition for short-term rentals, a lot of these new ADUs, if we have them, could be used for short-term rentals. Somewhat defeating the purpose of the ADU law, which is trying to get some, um, more diversity on our housing stock for, for residents, not, not for short-term rentals. So I, I shared with you the, the bylaw, the city ordinance that Gloucester recently approved, which, um, put much tighter, you know, controls, um, what kind of ADU can be rented for, for short terms, uh, in terms of ownership, in terms of, uh, type of residence, et cetera. So I think there's some good, uh, language in there that, that would be helpful to us. I think trying to get this all together and ready for, um, November eighteenth is awfully tight.
And the, the, the schedule for in February, you can apply for a building permit, and you have to have it built and rented by mid-April.
Right, so I, I, I think our risk, and, and I think Sarah, now that she's on the, on the call here, she might want to chime in, but nonetheless, I think I don't think there's a high, high risk of being flooded with new ADUs that are being occupied prior to April.
Do it at the April town meeting.
Right, I think, you know, yes, there's a risk, but I think it would not be a floodgate now, or a flood of.
And the, the risk might be even, um, let's say there were a bunch of ADUs, these permits, we what you, I guess, if someone were, what you're saying is they would not be required to get a permit if they had an ADU that was outside of our current guidelines, because our guidelines are so lax, like, people goodness, yeah, okay.
Right.
It would be a short-term risk, I mean, okay.
You know, if someone had an ex- existing apartment or garage that they, that they're not, that they haven't permitted.
Right.
Then that so it could be quickly permitted, an occupancy permit issued, and then they could start renting it on short term, and, and the new bylaw would miss them, it would not pick them up, they would be grandfathered.
Oh, they would be grandfathered.
That's, that's the.
That's the risk is that properties can be grandfathered.
That's, but that's an existing property, I mean, might need some modification, but.
Right, so someone's starting new, and they're, they hope to build a new.
Too hard.
That's, you're not going to get that done in a couple of months. So.
And if they have something that they, that they're using as an ADU, and it's not permitted, they could probably also be sending, using it as an Airbnb without permitting it.
Right.
So the people who are not obeying the law are likely not to obey the law.
So, so Sarah does have her hand.
Okay, please. Sarah, please.
Yeah, I, I think that I do have concerns about grandfathering of ADU units. Um, but I also think that it's more appropriate for the regulations for ADUs to be within the zoning bylaw and not try to retrofit it into the short-term rental bylaw. For instance, the state definition of short-term rental is less than a month. And I think that if it's a state mandate, we want to push to use the maximum the state allows us to use. The other big difference is in an ADU, you can't require, um, an owner on property. Um, so it's really significantly different than our current short-term rental, and it seems to me that it needs to go into the zoning bylaw and you, to give you more flexibility on the short-term rental in the general bylaw. And just go by the minimum we have to, and for instance, ADUs within a half mile of the train station can't require parking. Um, that's a difference, um, from our, and there's very little restrictions you can place on them. Now, in you know, in, in reality, I can tell you, I have a guest suite on my first floor with a full kitchen, and technically I could apply for a permit in February and have it approved as an ADU, because, and I'm sure there's lots of people that have those type of situations. But I don't know how many people would take advantage of it. So I think the risk of waiting to April may not be super great.
And if we were to try and put it into the zoning, that would require a public hearing from the planning board, and we are out, pretty much out of time.
Right. I wanted to pull it together, and I just had too many other priorities.
Is there anything, though, that we would still want to update as far, let's suppose we go down that road of updating it in the zoning bylaws? Isn't there anything we would still?
I think they're still there in updating the short-term rental.
I do too, I, I had a question about the Gloucester one, I mean, I think we should defer this for, um, future discussion, but just a, a question on the, um, what Sarah brought up, the thirty-day minimum, um, I mean, maximum, I guess. So that's what's considered a short-term rental, a, uh, a rental that's no more than thirty days?
Correct.
And in our current bylaws, do we have something about rentals being at least six months, or I mean, is there, there's just, so we have nothing, okay?
We have nothing, we are silent.
All right, that's where I think the risk is.
Right, right now, we only capture rentals that are six days or less.
Okay, so aside from what Sarah said, to your point, I, I think we still have work to do as a select board to update our.
Yeah, I think you could do both.
Yes, that's my point, yes.
But not between now and the eighteen.
Right, not between now and the eighteen.
Yes.
Both, but I think we should put it on our action items to review that bylaw, set some deadlines, so we aren't having the same discussion on, uh, you know, March fifteenth, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So um, first meeting in December, read the Gloucester thing, read our current short-term, and be prepared to discuss it.
Also our existing bylaw.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good boy, okay. Alan, do you have any insight into this, Mr. Moderator?
I, I do not.
Thank you.
But thank you, thank you for asking.
I think we also have an unpaid bill.
So, yeah, so the last one is, um, uh, a bill from past, last fiscal year, um, that did not get paid, and to, in order to pay it, it takes, you know, a vote of the, the, our legislative body, which is our town meeting, um, to, to authorize that payment. Um, it, it's, uh, related to, uh, consultants that were hired for the, uh, for the forty B appeal process. And, uh, it just, the bill got lost in the shuffle. So, doesn't happen very often, but when it does, we need to go to the voters. So I don't think that's a heavy lift.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
I think it's pretty straightforward, yeah.
The, the only, the only thing that's not straightforward about it is that it's a nine-tenths vote.
Right, that's, that's the hitch. Right, that's, that's the hitch.
Do we need to discuss the order of. Articles on one?
I need to discuss the order and we need to discuss which ones you recommend approval for. You can finalize that, we do need to have a special meeting, um, on the twenty-ninth. Um, we can finalize things then, but it's it's always good to. At least a sense of the board.
It's reasonably early tonight. I don't like morning meetings and I'm cranky.
I notice.
Just so, just for clarification on these different warrant articles, are they all, with the exception of the one requiring nine tenths. Um, of of the voters to say yes, are the rest of them a simple majority? About?
If I, if I could respond?
Yeah, certainly, moderator.
Yes, provided that this, the planning board at its hearing on October twenty-eighth. Takes out of the proposed MBA MBTA zoning bylaw. The requirement for a. A special permit for accessory structures in the Beaver Dam Road District. Town Council has opined that including that special permit requirement would trigger a two-thirds vote requirement for the entire article.
So if, so there there are two options, they could just delete it completely and just forego that provision. Or they could separate that provision out as a separate second article. And that would be a two-thirds, whereas the main art, the. Not the the article on all the other three A related would be a majority.
So, um. And just because there has been some talk as to the timing of the MBTA zoning. Warrant article, you know, why are we having it now, can't we push it to town meeting in the spring? I think we've discussed in some forums that, you know, if we approve it now, we we could offer to repeal it. And in the spring, would that also be a simple majority vote, or is that repeat, would repealing it? Be a different. Uh, require a different vote?
I would want to ask town council, but my my impression is that would be a two-thirds.
Two-thirds to repeal if we, okay.
That's right. The 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 exception from the two-thirds requirement is is for allowing. Certain, uh, types of zoning as of right, one of which is multifamily. And that requires a simple majority, I think if you were to go the other way, that would take two-thirds. But I, as I say, I want to ask town council that question, it's a good, good question.
We'll get confirmation.
Okay. Is there discussion, um, on the board? Of the idea of waiting. Uh, delaying, we can go ahead with the the CPC and the stormwater and the late bill. And and take up. As many of the, as some residents that have taken up the. Um, and the zoning when Milton reveals itself.
I don't, um, I think it's okay to vote now and as was was described, if if we have to change or modify, we can.
There's way to vote, because I think that the money that we spend. To defend our position. I'd rather spend on calling this now, special town meeting. Even if we end up at two in the spring or something like that.
Yeah.
I don't want, I don't want to be short sighted here.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that we can all hope for the best, but I think we have to prepare. And be proactive as to how we're gonna handle it. And my preference is I'll be the first one to call for a special town meeting.
I'll be, I'll be right there with you. There'll be about seven of us. About seven of us, yeah.
So I think that I I I just don't think it's prudent. To follow suit. Now, look, this is the way I look at it. When I was, if I was single. As opposed to being a family guy. Right, there are a lot of things I did when I was single that I wouldn't do because I had responsibilities. As a family guy, a lot of things I would do. I would, if I was not sitting here, I might push, hey, what the hell, let's wait. But we do have a family here, okay? It's a dysfunctional family as it is, but it's a, it's a town of Manchester, and I think we have to be a little bit more. Prudent and responsible. And, uh, prepare for the worst and hope for the best.
Yeah, I agree, I I think that if if. If Milton and the other, I think there's another, there are another town suing as well, or is it just Milton?
Hold on, I think.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's more than one, if they win, I hope they win. If they win, it's gonna be because of a valid legal argument. Manchester not approving this zoning change is not going to impact that to the best of my understanding, I I. Withholding our compliance, I don't see how that helps the legal argument. Uh, uh, you know, against a bad law, which I think it's a really bad law, so I I agree with Brian, I think we. We, you know, put it forward, let the people have their say, and if it goes forward and the lawsuits are successful. Then we modify our zoning as we feel need to as a town. But I I just don't think it helps the legal, I think some people think it's gonna help the the legal case if we all say no, and. I I don't understand that.
I mean, you still don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, it could go to town meeting and fail, but.
Right.
Yeah.
But they have their say.
We did it.
If we don't, if we don't vote. By the mandate, it was at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Right, do we automatically now fall off? Any list for for funding?
Well, even if we say no, we fall off the list, don't we?
Right, right, you know, and we have just, there's just too much riding on this. And, uh. I'm going to put my faith in the the task force, that they're gonna make their, uh, their case and level heads will prevail. And we can hope, and we can tell everyone that should the, uh. Should it fail, so should Milton prevail, we'll be the first ones to call for it.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
But I think that they just, it's irresponsible not to.
Take it.
My opinion.
Yeah, thank you.
I agree.
I hope CMG on the list of votes that we need to take. But I I think we. Each hurt each other. And we are in agreement that this should go on, the the MBTA zoning should go on.
We're talking about supporting.
So just as a matter of practice, I think it's always best to see the actual written article before we. Say yay or nay, do we recommend it, I just, as a matter of due diligence.
Yeah.
You know.
It's fine, we just need to make those decisions on on the top of the list.
Yes, I don't think there's anything wrong.
I mean, we could take no position and just let the people.
Like I said, I think it's it's good to, for all the articles, not, I'm not pegging anyone in particular. We should know what we're recommending, and I don't see anything in front of me, so I'm not ready to recommend anything. But I might recommend everything if it was just sitting in front of me. When on the twenty-ninth, do you want to read?
Ideally before even nine. Or before one o'clock. So, um, so the planning board will need another public hearing. Um, Monday evening, the twenty-eighth. They may, at the end of that public hearing that night, make some. Changes to to what they're proposing. And so. We have what what's, we have, you know, get to all of you, we can, what is being proposed, what's what's on the back of for, was it twenty-eighth? There may be some fine tuning of this. Uh, that evening, and then that would be finalized. Um, either that night or, well, from the planning board's perspective, it'd be finalized that night, and then, um. We can walk through those changes on Monday, Tuesday. Tuesday morning. People's schedules, I know that one's hard to. Be too late in the morning, so.
I can zoom in.
What, what time were you thinking, I'm sorry?
Well, is, we'll do it at eight o'clock, we'll do it at eight-thirty.
Eight o'clock.
Yeah, the earlier the better, frankly.
I think the time of us till after.
Yeah.
Early is tried, yeah.
We have to sign this stuff, though?
So then we need to sign the warrant, yes.
Okay, I mean, can we? Do we have to sign, what's, what's the deadline for signing versus attending the meeting?
Um, so, uh. For signing, we need, you have a few more days, you have until the end of the week.
Okay, if I got there in the afternoon to sign, that'd be fine, as long as we had the meeting in the morning.
Yes.
Okay.
I just, we, yeah, I just need to. Do any, I just need to finalize the warrant that you go down.
Okay.
And give it to a critical publication by by the end of the day.
Okay. So when do we have the. Language of the warrant? Is the language of the article?
We'll, we'll have all the articles. Ready in a couple of years, in draft form.
Yeah.
So you, you'll see the actual language, you you have. The three A zoning edit thing.
I understand, it's gonna be last minute, but.
Maybe.
There may be a few edits to that, but but you have the, you have the.
Yeah.
The vote.
Yeah.
In its final form. Um, and then the. Uh, the stormwater regs, that that new shorter version is ready to go, I just need to, we can send that out to you.
Yeah, whatever you can send out to us, like, this week.
Yes.
I mean, if you guys want to do eight, as long as I can do Zoom, I can do eight.
I just, yeah, and then. I leave. First thing, four o'clock in the morning, another twenty-nine. No, fifth round.
Okay.
But no, so I'm thinking, so, uh, Tuesday morning is fine, Tuesday night, we're gonna pee in the butt.
Okay, so eight o'clock on the twenty-ninth. And he will get us as much of those materials as possible. Um, Mr. Moderator, do you have any further comments?
Yeah, Alan, you're muted.
Sorry, I was muted, um, no, I don't have any, don't have any other comments, thank you.
Is there anyone in the room who has further comments? Is there anyone online who has comments? I think we're done with. That, um, item on our agenda. Okay. F Y twenty-six capital budget discussion.
Uh, Madam Chair, I will, I will say good night, thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Pat, you moderator. When do you want?
Sure, yeah, happy to, um, so capital, capital planning, um, as you know, the finance committee. Identified. Capital plan is a high priority, you you have as well, and they have started earlier than than we do, and so we're focusing on capital right now. Um, they, the finance committee met this, uh, last Wednesday, um, started to go over, um, some new new spreadsheets, so. I I've broken down capital into two buckets, one is what I will call sort of the standard. Yearly capital budget takes care of equipment needs, um. Some of the projects are large, but smaller, relatively smaller, um, pipe projects, um. Sort of the the run-of-the-mill, if you will, I I don't mean to under undermine those, importance of those, but more of the run-of-the-mill capital items. In the past, we've been spending in the three million dollar range every year on those standard. Typical, every year we we tackle a fairly long list of projects, they total about three, three and a half million dollars. With with inflation, with the cost of construction, uh, and the equipment that has happened. Um, I think it's proven that that three to three and a half be be four million plus or minus every year. It's sort of your standard. Um, capital items. So that's one bucket, so we have a five-year plan, we add it one more year to that five-year plan every year, you know, we drop off one year, we add a year. And so that's, that's one spreadsheet that you have. The second spreadsheet is is a new spreadsheet that looks at the major facility needs. That we may need to do in the next twenty-five, thirty years. Um, and it identified. Those project, potential projects, and identified bonding for those. And trying to space out that bonding in a way that, yes, it's burdensome, but can we do it in a way that doesn't break, break the bank in terms of. Taxpayers' ability to absorb the the debt service on these new bonds. Um, so that's what the second spreadsheet is. And and in terms of, you know, where you spend your time, I think it's probably more important to spend time on that facility financing. As a priority, and see where there's agreement moving forward on them. And then we can get to the. The typically yearly capital items. So if if you look at the facility. Financing, it obviously makes a lot of assumptions, which any long-range plan will have to do, starting out with how much. Uh, bonds cost in terms of interest payments, you know, do you do a fifteen-year bond, a thirty-year bond? All of that obviously impacts the bottom line and what kind of financial hit that causes. And then, of course, there's the the projects themselves, and when are they necessary to do, and in what order? So in in looking at the next thirty years. We have identified, um, what we think are the critical projects that will need to get done. And obviously, we made assumptions about the size and scope of those projects. And obviously, this is subject to a lot of fine tuning, but I think the basic concepts. Regardless of that fine tuning, are still very important to try to nail down and get a direction. So, uh, in that financing plan, you see some bonding that that was approved this past year, that was for the water and sewer upgrades, that was seven and a half million dollars. That is a showing as a shorter-term bond of fifteen years to get it paid off and free up money fifteen years from that. Similarly, I show, uh, PFAS. Mitigation, so again, uh, big expense, it's probably, you know, twenty-plus million dollars, we'll we'll know for sure. Later this, this winter, uh, whether or not we can do that for a little less money, we should, we're hopeful that we will get some. Uh, grant money as well as some, uh. Settlement litigation monies, uh, that are in the works. Uh, but we get a lot of unknowns, but nonetheless, um, an important project to to make sure that we remove the PFAS from our drinking water. So this is relatively new, this was, this hasn't been on the books for a lot of years, like a lot of these others, uh, because of the the. The discovery of the impacts of PFAS, um, and the and the new much, much lower thresholds that EPA is, uh. Is requiring all, all, um, public water supplies to meet. So you see a P PFAS and dredging, we can separate those out, about two million for dredging and twenty-one million for the PFAS work. Going down the line, then we show the DPW garage. Showing that going earlier because it's in on the facility planning that's been done. The current DPW side is going to develop as as a strong possibility for a future public safety building. You know, there's, um, given the. The flooding threats that both fire and police have, that's a, that will become a higher priority as as the years unfold here. So, you see. Then the DPW garage, you also see the Essex Elementary School. Uh, so that project is underway in the. Uh, so that project is underway in the, in the, in the design stage, the planning and design stage, at the early phase of that, um, anticipating that to come online in, um, by twenty-nine in terms of actually paying a bond. So what I show, again, just walking through that, that facility spreadsheet, is the key projects, not much money, and then when they would kick in in terms of paying on the bonds. Um, so that's the top half of the spreadsheet, and then the bottom half of the spreadsheet are the revenues to pay for those. But just to finish up the projects, so we have the Essex Elementary in there, and then further out, not until, um, mid-thirties, twenty-thirties, showing public safety building, uh, and town hall rehabilitation, uh, for a total of thirty million. And then this next line, residency project C Los Colos, for a total of forty-five million. That is projected to come from, um, the savings as bonds are retired. And instead of giving those savings back to the taxpayer, I show them going in as capital exclusions. So that, the good news is that you can keep, once you get to a higher level of, of payments, you keep that steady, maybe not going up higher, but you're also not dropping it. I, I do think it's, it's an effective way, we were able to benefit from that over these past ten years. Um, it enabled us to do some additional capital projects that were very helpful. Uh, and I think it's a, uh, an approach that the voters have, um, found acceptable. Uh, so I do assume that we continue with that. And because of, you know, see in the revenue side, because of retiring debt, it frees up monies, particularly starting in, in the early thirties and carrying through past twenty-fifty, and that's how it adds up over the years to that, that amount. Um, and then finally, as a, as a large placeholder, not taking place until the end of, close to twenty-fifty, I think it's forty-eight or forty-nine, um, bonding for building a, a wastewater treatment plant in another location. So mainly because of, again, flooding concerns, um, you know, alternative maybe that you can fortify and put a very, um, high and strong, basically, a seawall around the plant. Um, well, it'll have a cost, but it won't be as expensive as relocating. Is that viable? That's something that, you know, over the years, we'll have to kick the tires much harder on.
So you keep saying we.
I know, right?
I don't think that I'm saying.
Yeah.
I don't even fifty.
That's like a world.
It's we, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna be out by noon.
So, in, in any case, I'm showing a seventy million dollar.
Yeah, yeah.
Bag there, um.
I just have one question while you're gone. So when you figure these figures for these things, I know I just said that twice.
Yeah.
Um, the, that's in today's dollars you're figuring, right? Or is that?
It's, it's a combination of some projection ahead.
Okay.
Yes, yes. I mean, that, that plant today would not cost seventy million dollars.
Right, but.
Am I, am I accurate in that statement, Chuck?
Yeah, like to, just to rebuild it as is, yeah, would be much less than seventy.
Yeah.
You know, whether or not we're really looking at a three percent escalation over the next forty years.
Right, yeah, but there's some.
I'm not sure we're there.
There's some kind of.
There's some factor.
Yes, okay.
There's some factor. Is it, is it super accurate?
Right, I figured that.
A bit of a, bit of a dart.
Yeah, definitely, the further out you go, more of a guessing game. I would say the ones like PFAS and, you know, probably dredging and, uh, even, you know, DPW facility, like, those are more, you know, those were just done in twenty, twenty-three dollars, so, you know, I don't think we've escalated on three percent over the next two years. But I think it's still a relative, you know, relevant.
Right, the further you get out.
I mean, they, they are conceptual level estimates that were based on construction factors in twenty-twenty-three and brought forward. But I, yeah, I take your point, like, it might not be exactly three percent.
Well, I wasn't looking for an exact number, I was just trying to get an idea of how you.
So, yeah.
How you got the.
The closer, the more accurate, the further out.
Right, yeah, I get that.
Yep.
So those, those are the, we have four, eight, eight projects listed as the main big facility. Projects that are, that are in our future. And then, then I look at revenues, right? What, what would it cost to actually do this? Again, making, based on all the various assumptions and timing. And so for revenue, um, right off the bat, I'm looking at water and sewer. I'm assuming that the water capital fee that you approved for the meters would continue on. And those dollars would be available then to help pay off some of the debt that is in, uh, the PFAS and water sewer upgrades. I make the assumption that we instituted a similar fee in sewer, ramp it up over a few years to get to that same five hundred thousand. Then I show the, the new revenues from, from CST. The, uh, from both phase one and phase two, again, basing that in over time as, as revenues that could be used towards bond payments. Then I show both current town debt that we have, and that gradually goes away. And same with school debt, that gradually goes away, and I show that being reallocated then towards these new bond payments. Then I show, uh, some liabilities that also will, will go away by early, early to mid thirties. So our, our OPEB, um, health insurance for retirees, and, um, the, the kind of retirement system should be fully, fully funded by that same period. So that frees up about a million and a half dollars that we're currently paying for those liabilities. So again, I'm taking that money and showing it going towards bond payments. So that's how I try to reduce the impacts, um, on, on new taxation for these bonds. Um, so then you get to that bottom line, new tax revenue needed. Um, that, that line eighteen, if you're looking at the spreadsheet, and, um, what does that translate into, uh, a tax rate? And again, I'm assuming, starting off, each percentage point raise is about three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that'll grow over time, about fifteen thousand dollars a year, if history is any guide. Um, and so if, you know, if, if we were to do exactly what's on this, this sample, you would see a three percent tax increase for bonding needs, just for the bonding. And in twenty-seven, a six percent increase in twenty-eight, and roughly a five percent, four point nine percent increase in twenty-nine.
That's just for bonding, doesn't include increases in operating costs or the small capital.
Right.
Okay.
Um, so the, the small capital, I'm assuming is, is part of the, the overall, the standard budget, covered by the two to two and a half percent, which is what we typically see. But yes, you would have to, in addition to those percentages, you would want to add the typical two, two and a half percent to cover operating slash regular capital costs.
Four percent for schools.
Well, so the four percent for school, we have absorbed within the two and a half. Um, it does not assume, you know, obviously, I haven't projected any, um, override vote for operating either school or town.
Would the, uh, let's see, the high school, um, will be twenty-five years old in thirty-four.
Yes.
And that will trigger the need for more.
Yes, does that get done in one year, or do improvements get made over a five-year period? How, how does that get best funded? So, correct, that's, that's, that is not in this.
And, and ten years after that, the memorial school.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so, um, you have some flexibility in that, in that, uh, forty-five million that I talked about in terms of, I'm showing it targeted towards rezoning process, sew walls and culverts. Um, you could add, um, schools to, you know, capital. Medium, medium capital needs of schools. You, you could probably work that in to that, that number as well.
So based on the conversation we had at FinCom the other day, um, uh, and I know we're gonna have more conversations with them about this budget. One of the things I think they were looking for from us was a sense of priorities.
Correct.
Out of all the things that you listed here, what do we see as the priority? So I think that would be helpful, just to discuss that for a minute.
Mm-hmm.
Um, secondly, I, I think it's, it's a very comprehensive, well-done analysis, so thank you. Because it's a great starting point for the discussions we need to have. I think we also, um, need to consider how we smooth out these bumps, right? That was the other, right? And I do think we need to take a look at the existing spend. So while you're correct, we may need to increase to four million on average, okay, to accommodate for increasing costs. Not everything we do in small capital is pipes and, and, and stuff like that. We, we, to help smooth out those bumps, maybe in those years, we don't do the four million. We, we go down to two and a half or so, you know what I'm saying? We have to look at all options, because these are really big bumps, um, in ta, in the tax rate. And, you know, not going over two and a half percent is important, because we, we, you know, town is allergic to overrides, okay? But the townspeople know when they're paying more than two and a half percent, when their bill goes up. So I just think we, we need to look at all options for reducing the bumps, which includes lowering our spending or deferring some spending, um, for things that, I won't say aren't necessary, but maybe aren't necessary that year. You know, can we defer? Or in some instances, can you pull in? Okay, um, so we, we need to use both levers to, to try and, and smooth out these bumps a little bit.
Question, are these debt exclusions, or this is just the tax rate? You gotta get a vote on this, or?
Well, typically, there are debt exclusion votes.
Yes.
Because otherwise, to pay, you, you, you won't be able to do that. You, you wouldn't be able to, to pay for these bonds within the limits of two and a half.
No.
So, um, so yes, there would be debt exclusion votes.
I think we should have to revisit, I think it's really charged, the child house. Like five or eight pounds he brought as a piece.
So do we want to talk priorities now or not? Is that too early?
I, I like the order that, that grade, I mean, the PFAS is something that's.
Yeah, yes.
Right, I mean, that's common, and you're not gonna really have a choice, same with the school.
And, and, you know.
You say the order, and I was trying to make sure I'm, look, I understand what you said, what it was in his email?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, yeah. So it was seven, you know, the stuff we already approved, obviously, that's a high priority, right? We already approved that, the water and sewer upgrades, and PFAS, dredging, DPW, and Essex Elementary. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that would be a good priority.
And that's not, that's nothing new. We've always been talking about those, the top, uh, items.
I think it's, I just want to say, I think it's very important that we, that we get moving on the DPW facility. I know there's been, um, and I'm not saying this because Chuck's here, but, but, um, it, it, moving that and, or making decisions about what we do with that will free up a lot of time to discuss other things. I'll say it that way. Uh, we haven't firmly committed to moving it, okay? Well, we better make that decision, because a lot of other stuff is riding on that decision. So I, I feel very strongly that during this cycle, we need to, yeah, move it on the DBW.
I think we need to have a discussion of what we actually need there, too.
Exactly, yes. And, and I'd like to, and I've asked this to Chuck already, but I understand the estimate is twenty-two. I want to know what we can get for twelve. I want to know what we can get for ten. I want to know, we, what, what are we giving up by saying, I, I, I can only afford twelve million? What can you do for me? If we ask the question a different way, we really might learn something that we can then apply to some of these other projects.
So I didn't just come here to look pretty, if you want, I can. I don't want to get mired, you got down for hours, because I could. But I do think it's worth probably talking about some of those thoughts. And I, I think I have answers ready to, you know, talk about. And then I could certainly provide any back, background data or other analysis that, you know, you need. So, you know, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, if you guys have more.
I'm, I'm just saying, I think we're talking about during this financial cycle that we're just starting, actually putting some money in to do something there, okay? I'm saying right now, I support that, but we've got to have the conversation, get it. I don't know if it's putting our, you know, talking now or putting it on our action item list to have a good discussion on DBW. Let's get moving, let's make the, outline the decisions, we got to make, make some decisions.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't get into that detail too.
No, no. But for the, for the coming budget right now, in capital is the planning for the DPW, is that correct?
Proposed.
I don't know what the number's gonna be, but that's a topic, and there's gonna be some number next to that line, or we expect that there will be.
So, you know, to kind of help with that, we, I think we have a placeholder, I'm not sure.
Well, I've seen two numbers here, yeah.
What, uh, what it is, but, so I think we have the placeholder. Uh, we, we have money in this year's budget that we're actively looking to spend right now, that will inform whether that number is high, low, or somewhere, you know, right on. Um, you know, the kind of short answer is, you know, if, if we don't need it, I won't spend it. So we can always defer it to a following year, whatever's unspent. And, you know, we talk about that whenever we execute a contract for any, you know, design or construction or anything. Um, so I think, so that's all certainly on the table, and, you know, the way we always do it, frankly. Um, so I'm not too worried about that, I just want to make sure that we stay on pace, um, because I do think it's, you know, a high priority.
So we, we have allocated money for a technical.
Geotechnical.
Geotechnical.
Exploration, yes.
And when does that happen?
So we actually are under contract right now.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for the final, uh, loads of compost, that, you know, finished compost to move off the site, so we can physically get there to do the borings and the surveying. And so I've been pushing that to be done sooner or later, hopefully by the end of this month. Which means November, you know, they're literally under contract to go out there and do the work, which is, you know, a reasonable pattern anyway, because leaves are off the trees, and, you know, you get a better look at things and stuff like that. But certainly, the big piles of finished compost need to be gone to get any sort of accurate data or want.
Okay, is there a problem of getting that done? Um, is there pressure that we need to put on Black Earth?
Oh, yeah, but I, we'll, we'll see in a week.
Say true.
The day's coming.
Okay. Maybe we all need to go up there with bags.
I'll watch.
The single problem is gone.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, before we let a contract to design this thing, we probably need to have a long discussion about what it is we're designing.
Right, exactly.
So I will forward, you know, we already have some of this in the camp, believe it or not. So before we did the facility master plan, I've actually been a part of two siting analysis for DPW. One was before we moved the compost, uh, to the Pine Street location. And the next one was the alternative analysis between the existing site and the school street site, uh, which actually does have in it, uh, needs and wants, as well as just the programming that exists today on the, uh, Pleasant Street site. Um, so I'll, I'll, it's, it's worth reading, I don't know that it's.
I would appreciate, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, so that, so that does exist. Um, and then, you know, stepping forward into the facility master plan, we again looked at exactly what would be, you know, desired or needed, and, you know, how that shakes out cost-wise. Now, it is probably a step short of where, you know, I'm, I'm willing to go once we get, you know, another couple of months down the road. Um, and certainly, you know, Kathy, we've talked about, uh, alternative construction methods and diff, different site, uh, analysis. I think the, the cost that's presented, the twenty-two-ish million, it's not, it's in order of magnitude costs, conceptual level costs. Um, I don't think it's gonna be two million, I don't think it's gonna be two hundred million, but it's a, it's a good starting point, certainly room to come down. And so I, I do think, obviously, we would, we would very much get into the weeds on, before we design, you know, say the placeholder is thirty million dollars, before we execute that full three million. Design, you know, say the placeholder is thirty million dollars, before we execute that full three million, if we're taking things off the table. Then we wouldn't obviously spend the whole three million. But I think the placeholder is still valid or two million, whatever it is.
My questions at this point are. Please send all of us all the information you've got. When would you be ready to have a discussion? About the difference between needs and wants?
Well, I guess I would put it back on you. I'll send you the, the document that I have now. If you have any gaps or, you know, questions, then I would say just email me directly. If it warrants me doing a lot more research, then I'd need a couple of weeks to a month or whatever. Uh, but if it's, you know, kind of as you guys were expecting, then I'll, I'll talk about it next week or two weeks or after town meeting, whatever you want.
So it's possible to have discussion in December?
Okay.
Depending on the depth of your questions and what information gaps we need to fill.
Are we meeting with the FinCom that first week in December? We both have a joint meeting with them to kick off the budget and season. I can't remember what date.
So I know we talked about the, the joint meeting for the budget, the budget, that'll be the. Was that the sixteenth?
That's sixteen, okay. So the first week in December, we're not crowding that. Yes, okay, yep, December sixteenth. Joint Select Board FinCom meeting, okay.
Um, if there was. Talk about possibly doing a joint meeting on capital prior to that.
Oh, okay.
I don't have that note in front of me.
So, something that I was leading up to is perhaps. The whole review of the design and, and doesn't need to be. Done by the whole committee in a regular meeting. We probably should talk about it one, one more time and then. If there are people who are interested in working closely with Chuck. We can set up perhaps even including. Um, you know, other people, people from other committees and people who. That's not necessarily task force, but yeah.
So believe it or not, they and I have both discussed uh the need for potentially some sort of facility committee. And to kind of help uh. Birdcats uh and get these, get these things going, but that will leave that one for a much future date as well.
Give us, give us a, you know, after our, uh, the meeting where we. Get our questions answered.
Can I pull you guys again, I guess, on one other topic that came out of last week's facility meeting? And the, it's the idea of co-locating, that's why I con, I con, like to stay.
Oh, I wondered why they were staying.
There has been some question out there. It certainly wasn't part of the facility master plan, but potentially. Co-locating public safety as well as DPW on that site. Now, I haven't.
Did you say School Street? Is that?
Yes, on the potential new DPW site. Um, and so we did look at it as just a standalone public safety site, you know, on the upper kind of tier where DPW would be. And at that point, didn't pass kind of that kind of rating because of the proximity to the road and. Uh, you know, other factors in terms of response times and so on. But that's not to say it's impossible. It's just to say it wasn't ideal in the way we laid out the entire plan. And as we said when we, we adopted the facility master plan, it is a living document and I'm happy to go back and look at things if they weren't a closer look. And so that did come up last week as well. And so, you know, I've had discussions with these guys. We've been up and on the site prior to that and have looked at it and kind of, you know, one last time. What are the pros and cons and so, so on and so forth. Though, the big one that I see from a just building perspective. Taking the public safety side out of it, but they can answer that better than me, is. Um, the, the idea of co-locating them makes some sense, uh, and I, I do like it. Uh, in terms of building stuff and, you know, makes a lot of sense as a campus, but. The ideal scenario would be the public safety portion would be located right at the intersection of school and Atwater. And that would be in the face of kind of the existing um. Uh, zoning as well as those other restrictions in that kind of area, which would be. You know, you're not meeting all the setbacks and special permit requirements and the LCD, no matter what. But then there's also ConCom, uh, you know, wetlands jurisdiction in there for being in the buffer, not no build zone necessarily. So that's to say, like, it, it is feasible. But it would require that level of kind of. Public support that would rise beyond. You know, us just putting it like this is the place to go, you know, even if public safety is supported or, or not. Um, and so I, I guess I, you know, just to kind of put in your minds, like. We will vet that out a little bit more in terms of what that would cost and the potential impacts. But that's to say, it, it is a much heavier lift and that would be, you know, the same issues we heard about the blasting for CST would be front and center. The issues for Shingle Hill and potential forty B, front and center. Um, you know, in the ConCom jurisdiction. So like, all of these questions would then be thrown on. On top of just the financial ramifications and everything else we're talking. So I just wanted to kind of. You know, what, what your guys' thought would be, kind of just as a straw man type thing, you know, that, that is a potential.
I see Brian pointing at the chiefs and I would also like to hear from them regarding response times to our riskiest area, which is the downtown. And the harbor.
You're seeing.
Exactly. I don't think the response time would be, uh, really any, any different. Um, since we know the town's small as it is. And one thing we did discuss was the one twenty-eight bridge. If that were to go out and get hit for any known reason, then we would be on that side of town. Uh, however, you know, in my third year, it's never really been. Out of service, but, you know, there, I mean, there, there, there is that sort of potential. Um, I do know that when Rock, that was a similar concern when Rock built their uh, uh, new uh police station. They moved it from the center of town uh towards the outskirts. They found that they did have more uh walk-ins than, than they do, actually did when they were in the center of town. Due to parking and, and, and due to, you know, just. Not keep, people not being able to see any parking. But, but the bridge was a, was a sort of concern.
Yeah, that would be my only concern is just a one-way access.
But to answer Chuck's question. Are we open to it? I'm open to all options. My, I, I'm definitely open to all options. My concern though, I still have visions of the boat fire we had at the ramp and I'm. And, you know, thank God, we had a fire station right there, firefighter who saw the smoke. And. Prevented that from turning into something really ugly. That is my cure-all.
I mean, I look at it a couple of different options. Uh, you know, you look at the Pleasant Street site. But, you know, School Street's a direct shot coming down.
Right.
Um, you know, for, for us, I think that all the sites have positive and negatives. One thing I might look at is Middleton. They, they have, they're building a whole town complex where the golf course used to be. And then they got a cheaper rate on construction because they put it all out at the same time.
Right.
So, you know, what, what's, I don't know what the answer to that is, but what's the cost benefits to that? In the long, you know, look at the forest through the trees. I don't know what.
Would it be possible to do something? Um, where, where you stationed some of the equipment in one place?
Yeah.
Um. So that you don't have to use the submerged part of the fire station? And um, the core elsewhere?
Yeah, you know, there are renovation potentials at the current station. Um, I think you're gonna run into some grant funding problems being within the floodplain and from what I've done on a cursory view, so I don't think we're gonna have as much. Um, you know, money's coming in to assist us. But I think that's, that's an option. But it also doesn't fix the police station either, so.
Well, I mean, the police station doesn't flood all the time.
The uh. I was, I am still a fan of Pleasant Street site. But I do like the visibility. That School Street affords.
Yeah.
Okay, coming into town. Uh, access, we discussed this over a year ago and your concerns were fire trucks. Pulling out of the, uh, into residential area on Pine, on, you know.
Yeah, Pleasant Street.
So, uh, I think it's certainly worth. Building, looking at a municipal center. Like you said, I'm seeing what's going on up at uh. Milton now, I drive by it every day.
I think the response time thing, I mean, it's no different than being down here than.
It's, it's more about where, where the risk is.
Yeah.
You're from a fire standpoint personally, and you can tell me I'm all, all wrong. I see the risk as the downtown.
Certainly, I mean, it's denser.
It densely populated and you got, you know. Floating piles of fiberglass and gasoline, right? So that's my fear from a fire standpoint. I'm a. Thankfully, we're a blessedly, you know, safe town and. I'm less concerned about, you know, the police coming from School Street, less concerned about that. Fire makes me nervous.
To that point, Kathy, I've lived downtown for twenty-five years.
Yeah.
All right. I don't know, you know, other than an ambulance response. Here and there, uh, I don't see any, there's not, I haven't seen a fire truck downtown.
Well, you weren't on Pine Street last week, were you?
There have been a couple of.
You know, you look at the different spots. One benefit, the Pleasant Street is. You know, you worry about downtown flooding. It allows us to kind of split the town from an elevated perspective.
Right.
Uh, in those events, so, you know.
There have been a couple of car fires on one twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's, that's for sure. I mean, I, I'm, I'm open to all alternatives and the, the challenge we have is there aren't very many. But the two projects are on a different timeline. And I would think that whatever's going on with the DPW and the planning, you have to keep in mind, okay, so how is the space gonna be optimized for a. Safety, police slash maybe fire um. Center as well. And how that all fits together. I, I do think that if it makes sense. The, the zoning and the permits, I think can, can be worked out.
Keep, keep your options flexible.
Yes.
Like you said, like, you know, Greg said earlier, we, we, we're not on the same timeline. Some things we're talking about, we don't need for ten years, right? Um. So keep your options flexible. We can build things in a way that they could be expanded in the future. Some modular approach that you can tack on other things like Legos, right? Um, but keep your options open and um, the more flexible, the better, because we, we don't know what's gonna come.
I mean, you know, we were purposely not building in those buffers because it's harder. So our DPW is inherently not gonna try and encroach on that, but. With public safety complex type thought. We would have to, and therefore, you know, we would need that support.
So if we, if we build a DVW. Is that gonna change the way we build it if we're gonna add on down the road?
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't think so, because um, there are, there are certain elements of their operations that we would consider. In our. Build out anyway, you know, like say shared meeting space or something like that, or they need, you know, response uh, incident man center or stuff like that, like. Because their current facility here is not great for that in the. Kind of an incident, having it somewhere else, we need a lot of sense right now, I think it's the school. DPW was more sensitive. Um, but not at our current facility because we don't have those barriers either. Um, but, so like, that kind of, you know, would be built one way or another, but it's all up and removed from that area that I'm envisioning where they would go. So, yeah, I don't, I don't see it being an issue and certainly it doesn't have to be done at the same time, but, you know, we could kick the tires on, you know, what are the cost benefits, you know? I don't think we're cutting any costs in half again, but, you know, there is a lot of overlap in, you know, site work and.
The infrastructure.
Most contractors and infrastructure certainly.
I think it, the only thing I think is that it pushes it down the road that much further.
If we, if we focus on the DPW with the idea that it could be expanded and just work on the DPW.
Right.
Trying to take this whole thing as a single project.
It's gonna put it down.
That's an elephant in the boa considering.
Right. I think, yeah.
I agree.
I agree, but so again, to everyone.
Just don't shut any doors.
Very much on same.
Don't close.
It burned out the last week's FinCom meeting. Um, and so I think that, yeah, we, we were looking into these things anyway. I just wanna make sure we said it so that you guys will be there. Um, to work.
So I think you have some things that we're going to do. You're going to give us a lot of materials. We're going to try and adjust those materials and come back. Um, after the gathering and talk about this in, in more detail. And, and. Unless anyone has other concern, I suggest that we. Yeah, thank you, gentlemen, for all of the time that you have spent with us, um.
You know, we're getting it back.
Thank you very much. That would be very useful.
Yep.
Wondering why do I hang around? I was wondering why do I hang around?
Moral support.
Okay, the next. Item on the agenda. And like we, we seem, we have read on updates and it's due as assigned place. Done.
Uh, let's see, well, it's the DPW and that was that topic. That's um, pretty much said. Um, council on aging. And I. I, I met with the seniors today and they were asking questions about where we are on. A new director because Nancy's retiring. Is that been something that has been on your to-do list?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I haven't heard too much about that.
No, yeah.
But they were, they were wondering.
See, it's sort of as a November, December effort.
Okay. All right, that's uh, the primary thing. They also were curious about the meeting, which I know you cannot attend tomorrow, or can you?
Tomorrow. Um, I'll, I'll be late.
Oh, okay, all right. That's fine.
I'm trying to figure out when we meet.
They're, they're looking forward to updates on the senior center and money raising, well, you know them.
Yeah.
The major topics. So those are the, the two things there.
Right, um. I actually got to a school community meeting. Um, the two pieces of, they're my fingers to make, I gave you the budget, you know, budget sample. Um. They were still discussing the, um, their, uh. Reserve policy. But that seems to be settling down somewhat. The Department of. Uh, Elementary and Secondary Education is going to do a review and the review is going to be operational and not educational. That is to say, they will be looking at um, the management of the schools, the HR. Um, and, and that, that part of the organization, which I think is what both towns wanted to have happen. Um. So that will be ongoing for, I think about six months.
When is that gonna start in this thing?
They're starting, I think that they start with a self-evaluation and I think they're starting that now. Um, but. I, I can find out more precisely what the schedule. But in that, everything seems to be. Reasonably. Going along the. Uh, building project. Um, has the. School. Yeah, school building. Oh, yeah, but I love it. They have a team that does the school building. Um, it's got people who were on Memorial. Um. Um, and. Oh, Andy Oldman and, and Gordon Bruce Brewster, just. Um, it seems like a really good team. They have not um hired an operation manager, which is their next step. Um. They've decided that they need to look at the possibility of splitting. Um, the grades so that, um. The, um, maybe K through three, K through two.
K through usually.
K through two would be, would stay in Essex.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, and.
Amen.
And the.
We would verse them in grade three.
We would verse them in grade three at Memorial, but that's probably. Memorial is. Way built significantly below the design guide.
Capacity.
Capacity, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it's a little complicated because it's part of the regional agreement. Um, so it would require a town meeting vote to change and the. Ten years ago when they did the set, were. Setting up to build Memorial, they did a fairly significant study and felt that the parents of. Um, elementary school kids in both towns wanted their kids there. Um, whether it makes educational or financial sense. Parents are peculiar.
But you know that, that I'm glad to hear they're, they're open to that because. The K through two would, would solve that issue, right? Essex, K through two students would stay in Essex. Manchester, K through two would stay in Manchester and then the Essex children would join in Memorial in grade three. It saves millions if we. It saves millions if we do it that way, because of K through two typically does not require all the ancillary facilities that a full K through five elementary does. You need a little playground, you don't need fields, you know, you know, it's much less expensive, so I'm so pleased to hear that they are considering that. That, that could save us a lot of money, a lot of money.
They're also considering relocating to a site near their dump off of Apple Street.
Yeah, they bought a piece of land.
They bought a piece of land there.
Apple Street.
Um, so, but, but I think the the committee that's currently studying this is quite capable of making those, making a decision about whether relocating or building behind the current school or that. So that's basically what I know about what's going on.
That, that over that Apple Street location?
Yeah.
Only problem is the road.
Upstream.
Unless they're gonna come in from the
Hilltop Street.
Yeah.
Um, it's
It goes over to the, the dump and the DPW burn it, so that yeah, that stretch of land goes right through, but I don't know. I don't know whatever, but
Someone else is heading.
Yeah.
Someone else is heading.
We have enough of our own.
Don't, don't, I'd let you know what
That's great.
Um. And I think you know what the MVP is only people would do. You're sweating blood.
Actually, they did a really nice job, I'm interested.
I've heard a lot of good reviews.
Yeah.
Manchester Club.
So it was pretty well received.
Good.
Yeah.
Um.
Uh, yeah, I got a few updates. So, um, reminder, the Board of Health is having a public hearing on proposed updates to, I guess it's the tobacco, marijuana, et cetera law. Regulations, public hearing is this Thursday night at six thirty. Um, so you're interested in understanding what the proposed changes are? Do you have a synopsis, Greg, on what they're proposing?
So, most of it is just sort of separating out currently combined, breaking them out into separate sections. But the, the most significant change and potentially the most controversial is adding a, a new regulation that says any person born after two thousand and four.
Generational.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, would, would not be eligible to purchase tobacco products, even after reaching years twenty more.
Does that
Like ever?
Ever. Yeah.
Does that include vaping products?
Yes.
It does.
Yeah.
I just real overreach, that's government.
Yeah. So anyway, that's what the public hearing is about. You may want to attend as a citizen.
What, what is this?
Thursday night at six thirty. So that's going on, on the less controversial side, let's see, um. So, uh, Bike and Ped has, has met, they, um, are working with Chief Fitzgerald, um, on uh, an e-bike safety, um, some sort of e-bike, uh, video. They had a video, I think they made with him last year on a different topic and, um, biking in general, and so now e-bikes are the latest cause of, you know, injuries, et cetera, so we're all trying to figure out what to do with that, so that would, that would be great. Um, uh, Bike and Bed also voted to endorse the green, the Green Belt Land acquisition that we're gonna be proposing on the warrant for town meeting, so they think it's a great idea, and they're gonna be formally endorsing that. Um, the downtown improvement, um, they um, are submitting an application to the CPC to obtain CPA funding for the attractive streetlights that they put on Summer Street. Um, they wanna, as part of the culvert project, when this project digs up this area of the downtown, we'd like to replace the streetlights with the more historically accurate or, uh, you know, attractive streetlights. So I encourage them, you know, do it. Do it while we're digging it up, and, uh, so they're gonna make their case to CPC for that funding. And I think that was it. That was it.
Okay, that's I'm making a note here because that winds up under the historic district commissions.
Yeah.
A, a little bit.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
They're involved with lighting, and that makes sense. Going around the curve on Beach Street, that's outside the district, but now you're coming back.
Yeah, so if they're, I mean, their thought was to do what they did on Summer Street, if that's not historically appropriate.
I'm
I'm sure they would be you know, amenable to doing something that is historically appropriate. The, the idea is to get rid of these ugly streetlights. And they're in front of common, so I'm sure the common ground there.
Ox Rep, uh, they voted to hold the pricing at Singing Beach. The, uh, we had a good year this year, and I only know what's gonna happen next year. But, um, they decided to with, all the numbers work, so they're gonna, they're gonna hold it this year. After what I've heard right now, I think they should raise it to like ten thousand dollars a car or something. No, so at this point, that's the only other deal with Chod House now, and then the next year, we're good.
When are we having the updated parking discussion? Because we had said we were gonna have it at the end of the season, while it was fresh in our minds, I thought, season's over.
Yeah.
Is that November or?
November.
Is it November or?
The first one.
Um, unfortunately, I couldn't attend the last planning meeting, had some going on. And, uh, the hybrid advisory hasn't met, so let's vote it.
Okay, the that's my agenda. So is there anything that people would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to pull out C.
Okay.
I'd like to pull up B.
Okay. Um.
While doing.
Okay, is there a vote approved in any minutes?
Second.
Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anna says yes.
John says yes.
Okay, that was easy. Oh, the contract for the town administrator recruitment. Especially
Uh, have we even posted it on our own?
No, we have not.
Why are you spending my time? Why, why, why don't we just? I, I can't wrap my head around we haven't even attempted to, uh, post it on the MMA or, uh, website or see what's out there. You can always revisit this in two months if you don't like what we've seen for, um, for, uh, response. But at this point, I'm, I'm reluctant to spend money than on something that we can certainly try ourselves. Uh, you know, we've, we've also talked about succession planning here in town. Uh, a lot of options, I think, that don't require us spending a lot of money, I don't know what it costs to, to post it. And like to explore that option in the next six weeks, we'll after the contractor. And maybe all kinds of things.
But where would that put us on a time, timeline lines? If we did do that.
So it's a little early to post right now. There's the findings. Well, if we're targeting you know, early summer, if we have someone under contract, say someone under contract by the end of year, and then, you know, six, eight weeks later, you know, until they give notice, they'll, they'll be taking my position, which is, you know, bill of, bill of August, which is what I'm shooting for. Um. So, I I mean, I think it's early to do that. I hear what you're saying, you can do that in person a year. And and see what happens. It's, uh, well, I'll let John.
Yeah, no, I recruiters. I have some comments and I, and I understand that, and there will be all kinds of people in the mix. But to organize and manage the process and do that internally takes a lot of volunteers on a committee, and we're gonna have to have a committee. And somebody who's gonna be committed to do that. It's quite a few hours of pulling things together and setting up interviews and, okay, how's all of this process going to evolve? I'm a little bit concerned about getting people that are going to be able to put that time together. I understand the timing problem that, that, uh, that Greg has mentioned. And I, I think we need to take advantage of in any event, a recruiter. I mean, we could post it as described and maybe get a little bit behind the eight ball, but you still want a recruiter to go and they've got a rolodex, we all know how that works. And that's, you know, if you've got an experienced group, they know how this process goes, and they have the rolodex to chase down the possible people. It may be that the best person is intern, it may be that that's the situation, but that process still has to be managed, and I'm concerned about having, uh, the time and
So, do I interrupt just briefly?
Well, just because I've forgotten, what is the amount of money we're talking about?
Fourteen pounds.
Fourteen.
Okay.
It's not a
So it's, it's short money for a position of this importance. John is correct, you typically use a recruiter. Um, because part of what they're going to do is meet with stakeholders and learn about what we want out of our next town administrator, right? What, what are the characteristics that you wanna see? What are the requirements of the, of the position? They're gonna talk to people. Um, because it's a great opportunity to kind of, you know, open our aperture a little bit. Also, um, they are very well networked, so they did indicate it's gonna be a competitive, um, market. And we talked about getting something posted in, um, at the January timeframe, so we could take advantage of the, the MMA conference in January to see who is interested and maybe meet some people in person. Um, so just typically for a leadership position like this, you would use a recruiter.
Yeah.
Kind of par for the course.
Yeah, the, um, uh, Kathy and I and Greg met with, uh, this one recruiting firm that Greg knows well, but he gets calls every week for people, uh, looking at, see if they can attract him away. Uh, this is a fairly prominent group. They did say that about sixty percent of all searches are recruited, and of all, of all of the town managers, sixty percent generally go through a recruiter. Forty percent do not. They do sixty percent of those sixty percent. So they are the dominant player in this area. And they described some of the challenges we have, and I guess the, the biggest one is geography. Greg accepted because he moved here. But most town managers will not move, and of course, we're dealing half our radius is water.
Greg, how's your time? Will you recruit?
You know, I don't I don't remember how I first learned of the of this, I mean, I don't know if I saw it on my, uh, on the recruiter's ad, or did they did they send me an email? It was, uh,
These people, they send out emails, but then they pick up the phone and call people, I mean, they do the
Greg did say, we had a recruiter. But he was contacted by recruiter, he's not sure, but the town hired a recruiter in two thousand twelve or thirteen or whenever.
Uh, yes.
Back, back then, yeah, we used to recruit at that.
So do they do the weeding out, or is that our responsibility?
They will weed to a certain point and probably say, here are
So that's where the screening committee.
Yeah.
We talked about putting together a screening committee, which would be made up of different, you know, a few people, board members, maybe a we talked about a prior select board member who had gone through this process before. Maybe an at-large member, that's what we probably need to talk about at our next meeting, the makeup of the screening committee. Um, and, and those people would screen the candidates for ultimate selection by the select board.
So typically, the recruiter, you know, say you get thirty applications, they'll, they'll whittle that down to eight or so, present those eight to the screening committee, the screening committee say, yeah, we like the looks of these five. And they'll interview the five, and then they'll recommend three to you as a board. And then, and then it's turned over to you as a board to do those interviews of those three finalists. Um, the recruiters will help with setting that up and they'll help you with the questions and that sort of thing if you
So some of it, I've been through a superintendent's
Yeah.
basically, basically, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the, we said that, that, that the money involved is quote, short money. I think we've probably all been exposed to recruiters, which generally make a ton more than that in the private sector. But this is a very specific, uh, discipline that three hundred and fifty towns here in Massachusetts need. So they, they are well schooled in terms of the, uh, critical issues they just need for your town, which are the critical issues among all of the issues that, uh, they're familiar with. And they would probably interview us, I'm sure they would.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and so we're gonna tell them what's
That was a big fail.
Important.
I get if I
We'll arrange a grade on the curve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still a problem.
Well, it's true, it's true.
Well.
At least, um, okay. I'm still more convinced.
Well, I move that we approve the contract for the town administrator recruitment.
Second.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Kathy, yes. Anna says yes.
John says yes.
Okay, contract for the operational audit, this session.
So here we have, uh, two different proposals. We, we see three quotes. Um, um, I didn't include the, the, sort of the middle one. Uh, I feel like the two that I showed you, um, they're highly qualified, you, you do the work. Um, just because of their, their background, they're all retired managers, they did good in the, in the industry for a long time. So, but you had two different proposals. One, um, is sort of the strategic strike team. Um, focused, sort of on that. I don't know how I wanna call it, low hanging fruit, but, but the focus very narrowly on a handful of recommendations. Um, and, and put those forth and help us flush those out. The, the other firm, it would take a more comprehensive approach, a deeper dive. Um, and it will also look at, you know, uh, action, actionable steps to take that are you know, prioritize those, but, but it would be a deeper dive. So, one estimated about fifty hours and the other doubled down, about a hundred hours. Um, and there, the two prices reflect those, those differences, one is about double the other.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So in my mind, I have gone back and forth, the pros and cons for, for either approach, and, and certainly both firms will say, if you want something a little different, we're, we're happy, you know. We'll go down for something a little different.
Say who the third firm was, or?
Third firm was, uh, UMass Collins, Collins Center at UMass.
Well, what was, I didn't see any private sector experience at all in either of the uh, proposals, I'm trying to dig them up here. That was disappointing.
The, uh, capital strategies has some people that haven't, they don't, haven't been assigned a heavy role, but they do have some people in the office that are private, that have come from the private sector. The that's a proposal more comprehensive.
Which date did you send that out, Greg? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time doing, I have to email it in a second.
I'm sorry.
What was the date you sent us those requests, um, the
It was in your packet.
Oh, it's in the packet. I sent it to us previously, though, I thought, maybe, maybe I misread that, okay. It was in the packet.
And if, you know, if it, if you would find it helpful, we could have a couple of you do a meet, using, ask questions, do a quick interview. And that is something that you'll find helpful. Obviously, we're anxious to get it underway, just because now, I'm hoping that we can implement some of the recommendations as part of this budget cycle.
You all seem to be looking at things.
John?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to sort this out here, because in the, in the packet, I'm not sure, we've got, a lot of these names are the same. Community Paradigm. Community Paradigm.
They're the same ones for the
Yeah, it's the same one, it's a different, different group.
And then the other one is is the Capital Strategic Solutions.
Right.
So one is about ten thousand and one is about twenty thousand, twenty one thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, they both willing, the one who has fewer hours is willing to put more hours on the table if you want a deeper dive. And the one that proposed a deeper dive is willing to do
A shallow dive.
A more shallow dive and shave off some dollars. You know, they they prefer, they think it's best to do the comprehensive.
Do you have any experience with either of these groups personally?
I I haven't used either one in the past. I I I know the players just from other just from other things I've been involved in. Like I said, they're they're retired managers of, they've retired in the last five years. So I've known them for quite a number of years, just in the profession. I mean, I think both would do a very credible job. I'm confident in that. Bottom line question for me is, do we want the more comprehensive to start or not? And I, as I said, I I have gone back and forth in my head.
What's the downside of being comprehensive?
Ten thousand dollars.
Well, and the amount of time.
So we have a grant for eighty eighteen five. So we're talking the
Than that number. So so one, we don't pay anything.
Fifteen hundred dollars to town. Is that what we're saying? Versus no money. It's three thousand. Three thousand, three thousand dollars, I would go comprehensive.
Yeah, and I just, like I said, if if the, I'm interested in whichever company will also consider, you know, more private industry best practices, not just municipal. Because we're talking about efficiency. The government's not the best source of lessons learned there. So I I I want a little infusion of, you know, someone who's been in private industry. So if if that's capital, then that would be my preference. I also think it's different. It's nice to get a different perspective from the people who are doing the recruitment for the town administrator to get a because the town, the the people who are Paradigm, they're doing the town administrator recruitment. They're gonna learn a lot anyway during the their interviewing process. I'm sure we can learn some lessons from that. And getting a different company to do the operational audit will give us a completely different perspective, perhaps. I think this one is up to you, John.
Yeah. What was the differential of two thousand bucks? Okay.
No, no, the difference was ten thousand. We have an eighteen thousand dollar grant, which will pay for all but
Three thousand.
Three thousand of the most more expensive and all of the less expensive, we have to give some money back.
Uh, yeah. But the net number differential to us is two thousand dollars in the most
Yeah.
Two or three? And and to Kathy's point, I think you can learn more with a different guy. Okay. So that's the guy.
Capital.
Solutions. So, all right, so I'll make a motion that the board approve to enter into a contract with Capital Strategic Solutions to perform the operational audit.
Second. Okay, Jeff.
Sure.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
I'd say yes.
John says yes.
Hey, we got the movie. Okay.
Okay.
You already talked about tobacco regulations. We talked about briefly Ocean Street. We did not get that grant. We have to talk about what next steps might be. You can chew that up for the next meeting.
I'm sorry, so we are gonna discuss it at the next meeting?
Just a little bit of update, a lot of comments, questions, concerns about the one fire rock and the access off of C Street. There there is no curb cut granted. And what they are constructing on site falls within the parameters of what you're allowed to do. So if 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 they wish to have a curb cut, they need to come back to us. And the DPW director will will put that request to the planning board as a as a special permit request. So that's the process that it would follow. So the
So suppose they don't come back and actually request it, but just do it. That's what I think the concern of.
So then there'll be an enforcement action.
So.
I think Chuck said he would just curb it right over anyway.
So the enforcement action would be triggered by what?
If they try to use it on a permanent basis.
Is there actually a curb, a curb there? That's what was my question.
There is no actual curb.
Right. Yeah, okay.
My point, though, is what triggers the enforcement action other than a neighbor complaining? Building inspector go over there and look on his own? Or does he have to wait for somebody to complain to his office?
He can initiate.
I should have phrased that differently, will be.
So it'll most likely wait until construction is finished.
Okay.
Depending on what the building inspector will allow for temporary construction. That's a judgment call. You don't, you don't issue official access points for construction. On occasion, the building inspector will allow a property owner to go you know, get onto their property for constructive purposes.
But
That is very different than a curb cut in the driveway and access.
I'm very concerned that they will have established, by using it for construction, they will have established a de facto case that it is in fact safe. Because they're using it and they haven't had an accident.
I believe my conversations with Chuck is that when he grants this, it'll be required to have detailed work there. There'll be Right. Okay. Right. So if you're in robbery all the time, they forgot to be there full time. You know, I mean, that, I don't think that DPW has a problem with the construction's access. It's not a DPW issue. What he's saying, but what he's saying is that to your point, there will be there'll be strict criteria to continue to use it as a construction only site and not a de facto driveway or curb cut.
How do we know when they're done? If the enforcement would be triggered by the completion of the project. So certificate of occupancy. Okay, this would would be the trigger for looking at the property. Okay, that's what I was trying to understand the process.
So if there are further concerns about legal issues, I think we should hold that for
A different.
A different, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, we we interrupted your report with.
No, that was Yes.
Okay, in that case. I move that we enter into an executive session for MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty one A three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of public body and not to return to open session.
You may return to open session for a minute, depending on what you decide.
In that case.
It just depends on your deliberations.
So.
You can wait until the next meeting and make that any decisions public.
Let's, let's leave open the possibility that we do it tonight since we're all sitting here. So let me withdraw that motion and move instead that we enter into executive session for MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body. Second. Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Okay, in which case we can shut down, sub Debbie away, close the door. Send me away.
But he can't go home.
No, yeah, no one go home.
Because we may come back.
If you keep the, you have to keep the Zoom.
You have to keep the Zoom because.
We have to shut off the Zoom.
We establish it.
We establish it.
Yep. Don't help her, Brian.
Pete, stick around.
So would you explain to the gentleman outside what we're doing and we're ruining his life, but that's the way it is?
Keep them, keep them here.
Keep them here because we may need.
I don't think, I don't.
But tell them we'll be very efficient.
I don't think it'll be long.
Okay. I think you probably heard that.
We should shut down the Zoom now.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you. We have to go, we have to go back anyway, even if we don't do anything. Yeah.
I'm not gonna restart the Zoom just to adjourn, but.
We have the audience hanging.